Hi, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Board of Education to order if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, our order of business, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Miss So, is there a second? Miss Hirsch? All right, not seeing any discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote on that. Bernstein is a yes. So, yes. Hirsch? Downey? Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson? And Mr. Sherr is absent, so that's seven zero. Thank you. All right, next up is our student and staff recognitions. So I'm gonna take the first two together, Mark and Meredith, maybe you can come up to the podium. I'm gonna stay seated here because I have a microphone. All right, so this is our senior class president and our student body president. So Mark and Meredith, on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank you for your service to the students of Greenwich High School. Mark obviously served as the student body president, and Meredith served as the senior class president. This has been a very different and very challenging year unlike any faced by your predecessors. You rose to the challenge and worked together with the student government to make the student body feel a sense of community, even when more than half of them weren't in the building at any given time, and when the student government couldn't even meet in person. Through a variety of virtual events and communications, you were able to bring some normalcy to an abnormal year. You represented your peers quite well here at our Board of Education meetings, as I mentioned to you during our last executive committee meeting. It is not always easy to stand up in front of the board and the public and voice the concerns of the student body, but you did so ably and with respect. You made your voices heard. Having interacted with both of you throughout the year, I can say that you leave these positions knowing that you left large shoes for your successors to fill, and we'll hear from them a little later. As for what's next, Mark, you're on your way to the University of Chicago where you plan to major in philosophy and minor in public policy studies, to have that right? Wow, I should note that the University of Chicago seems to be a magnet for former student body presidents. I know of at least two in the past five years that have ended up there, so way to follow them. And I know you've mentioned law school in the past. I'm happy to try to talk you out of it. We've got a couple other people here that she'll talk you out of it, too. We're here to help. Meredith is attending Harvard University after taking a gap year. We were talking about that a little earlier. Undecided about what you're gonna study, but I know you're gonna find something that you're passionate about and put your all into it. And don't rush, Meredith. Many of us here are still working out what we want to be when we grow up. So again, thank you both for your service and best of luck to you in everything that you do.
Can we give them a hand?
All right, the next up is the GPS representative for the 2021 Connecticut Teacher of the Year. So I guess I'll turn it over. Is it Kathy Burnett that's gonna start us? Hang on, Kathy, we're working on audio.
Are we good?
Yep, you're good now.
Hi, Peter. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Burnett, Chair of the Distinguished Teachers Award Committee. On behalf of DTAC, we want to express our congratulations to Allison Fallon for being named Greenwich Public Schools Representative for Teacher of the Year Program. Ms. Fallon has a true love for teaching, offers endless support and encouragement to her students, and continuously partners with staff and parents for the benefits of her students. We know she will make Greenwich Public Schools proud in this state-level program. Thank you and congratulations, Ms. Fallon.
All right, Kathy, is that it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, no problem. Ms. Fallon, if you're watching at home, I know at least two students that have grown so much by having you, and I know there's many others. So we really appreciate the work that you and all of your peers do. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to our next item, which is the 2021 Science Fair Award winners, who Mr. Bramonte, I don't know if you're with us in person or online.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
How are you guys? Good evening, everyone. My name is Andy Bramonte. I'm the science research teacher at Greenwich High School. I'd like to, you know, this is an amazing opportunity. Doing this virtually actually allows me to to share some good stuff with you guys. So if you give me just a second, can you guys see my screen? You see that it's a PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, yes.
Okay, awesome. So thank you to the board for the opportunity to acknowledge these great kids. 2021 was really an amazing year. So much so, I mean, it was a very, you know, different year, as many of us know. At best, these kids were hybrid, and in very many cases, most of these, a lot of these kids were remote. So I came up with this quote, which really encapsulated or encapsulates the commitment, hard work, and imagination of these kids. And it's, while COVID dictated how we would interact, science research was once again performed at the lab bench. Many, all of these kids basically came in on off-hours, evenings, weekends, holidays, to basically get this work done amidst, you know, the crazy schedule that we had. So with that, I'd like to describe a lot of what what happened this year. The first thing is the 2021 Regeneron Talent Search, and this is the, many of you guys are aware of this, this is the Talent Search for Seniors, where about 1,800 kids are pared down to about 300, what we call RSTS, or Talent Search Scholars. And each of those students are awarded $2,000 each. And the four, once again, we had a great showing. We had four scholars, Hannah Goldenberg for her work on linking e-cigarette usage to COPD. Alexander Petty for his work on increasing crop production using metal oxide nanoparticles. Sophia Pronina for her work on a rapid detection for Lyme disease. And Edgar Sosa for his work on eliminating or finding a way to eliminate coffee rust, which is a fungal disease that impacts the coffee industry quite a bit. Later on, so that was in December and January, the finalists, so the 300 scholars are basically whittled down to 40 of the top students in the country. Those are the finalists. And once again, we had two finalists, Hannah Goldenberg and Edgar Sosa. These finalists were featured on NPR, NBC Nightly News, Forbes Magazine, and American Lung Association. So what I was hoping to do, and I hope it works, is I'd like to show you just 20-second snippets of two of these features, if I can. So here goes nothing. You guys see that?
Yes.
For Edgar Sosa, his project hits close to home.
It's not easy to leave your country.
He immigrated from Guatemala after his family lost their coffee farm to something called coffee rust.
Coffee rust is a fungus that has been killing coffee for several years now.
Edgar studied how to kill a similar fungus using a copper-based particle and hopes to one day test this in Guatemala. Now, their advice to aspiring scientists.
No one should be afraid of getting involved in science.
It's okay to be smart.
That's Edgar's. Now, in the case of Hannah, she was featured on a show for the American Lung Association. I'll give you a few seconds of that.
When we were younger, we were always warned about the dangers of smoking tobacco cigarettes and using using other drugs. But our teachers and doctors and all of the other adults in our lives hadn't really accounted for e-cigarettes. And all of my peers told me that they thought it was harmless, but I definitely had my doubts because there are very few things that you should be inhaling besides clean air. And I didn't think e-cigarettes were an exception to that rule.
So just keep in mind, guys, I remind you, these are high school students out there on NPR, American Lung Association, Forbes, NBC Nightly News. This was truly amazing. Next up is the 2021 Connecticut Junior Science and Humanity Symposium. In this case, about 300 or 400 applicants from the state are are, well, there are 300 or 400, 300 to 400 applicants, and about 12 or 13 oral presenters are selected from that list, and about the same number of poster presenters. This year, we had three oral presenters present their work in what amounts to what is like a TED Talk. Ambika Grover for her work on rapid iPhone detection of particulate matter 2.5. Alexa Nakaneishi for her rapid test or her rapid reading test, computer-based for to discover whether a student has dyslexia. And Sophia Pronina, Pronina, once again, for detection of Lyme. For the posters, we had Madeline Minichetti for who created a wearable fabric, wearable, stretchable energy resource that's based on sweat. Once again, Alexander Petty for his work, his metal oxide growth of crops. And finally, Uma Penkar for her work on finding a way to introduce these nanoparticles to seeds to better enhance that whole growth benefit for farming and crops. So I'm excited to tell you that first place in the oral presentation went to Ambika. Second place in the oral went to Alexa Nakaneishi. Fifth place went to Sophia Pronina. And first place in the poster session went to Alexander Petty, which was truly amazing. So four out of the six top awards were Greenwich High School. At the National Junior Science and Humanity Symposium, which these three students were afforded the opportunity to go to. Ambika Grover was awarded first place in environmental science. Just to give you a little quick snippet of Alexander's work, he basically took these nanoparticles and put them into basil plants and witnessed this increase. And he was the first in literature to actually find these nanoparticles in the actual plant. If you look at those pictures on the right, that represents a needle-like connection between a leaf and the plant. And that's our electron microscope. And you could see the little dots in there are the little nanoparticles that basically migrated through the plant. For Alexa, I thought you might be interested in this. This is a reading test. And if you look at the very center of the of the screen, you'll see what is in purple, that is basically a reading test for a typical reader. And the motions are very linear from left to right, and they return, and they're linear once again. And if you look at a dyslexic reader on the right in blue, you could see that there's a lot of, you know, a lot of jaggedness, a lot of interruptions. And if we look at the actual eye movements and what's called a correlation, or how straight is that line? You could see a very distinct difference in typical versus atypical readers. And this became the foundation for her test. So now a student or a young, a young child can actually take this test in minutes and get these results, which is amazing. In Ambika's case, she looked at what's called particulate matter 2.5 microns, which is a, it's basically smog that is a silent killer and leads to all kinds of respiratory inflammation, including lung cancer, COPD, stroke, and heart attacks. The reason it does that is it causes our lungs to to create nitric oxide. So she created a test that would, that you would basically breathe on. It's an iPhone-based test or smartphone-based test where you would breathe on this little sensor, and it would turn green based on the amount of nitric oxide or the particulate matter that you were exposed to. She created an app that would basically tell you what the result was and then actually launch it into a GPS coordinate. So you could actually look and see if you're in a hot zone for this pollution, which was really incredible. Moving on to the Connecticut Science and Engineering Fair, we had 14 participants this year. Stephen Blank was the first for his rapid COVID test. Halak Lassie was, created a very rapid liver cancer detection system. Timothy Drinkle looked at the air movement around an airliner wing to basically enhance the stickiness between the air and the wing itself, which would increase fuel efficiency. Sam Florin looked at error corrections for quantum computing. We have Hannah in there again, Ambika, which we spoke about already. Autumn Kim created a novel sponge that would basically remove oil from oil spills in oceans and lakes and the like. Adam Klajewski looked at risk preference based on cohorts, based on age, based on number of children, number of siblings, all kinds of things, and his results were very interesting. Protag Corup looked at new treatments for multiple sclerosis. Once again, we have Madeline Minichetti in there. Ella Moore looked at, looked at new ways to prevent respiratory inflammation, which is the major impact of the COVID disease. Uma Penkar, once again. Eureka Sakai created a smart bandage that would basically elude or release antibacterials on as needed. And Elizabeth Wallace made a heavy metal and fertilizer waste filter based out of spinach waste products or spinach root. So for this fair, again, it was done virtually. The kids actually worked in front of a camera using the the boards as a backdrop and had three to five minutes to actually spill their guts about all that they did. And these are the awards. There basically was a clean sweep of all the top awards. Now, I remind you, guys, there are six ISF spots which represent the top awards at the Connecticut Science Fair. And if you count down in red, there are six winners. So it was basically a clean sweep. Ambika was first place in life science and biotechnology. She won the Gerber Award for Scientific Excellence. Autumn Kim, first place in physical science. ISF Spot won the Gerber Award for Scientific Excellence. Halak Lassie, first place in engineering. Timothy Drinkle, second place in physical sciences. Hannah Goldenberg, second place in life sciences. Sam Florin, first place in math. Uma Penkar, first place in environmental sciences. And Eureka, second place in engineering. Regeneron $500 award. Protag Corup, second place in biotechnology. Ella Moore, fifth place in life sciences. Madeline Minichetti, an Office of Naval Research Award. Elizabeth Wallace, I'll speak about this in a second, the Stockholm Junior Water Prize nomination for the state. And finally, Stephen and Adam were finalists in the Life Science Division of the Fair. So after that, our five students went to ISF, which was held virtually once again. So there's Timothy sitting at the computer, and again, everything was done through that PC. And this, in this case, they had about 12 minutes to talk about what they did. But we had Halak Lassie, Timothy Drinkle, Hannah Goldenberg, Ambika Grover, and Autumn Kim. And I'm happy to tell you that three of our students did receive awards. Timothy Drinkle received the Air Force Research Laboratory first place award of $750. So this gives you a little indication as to what he did. Something called the Kawanda Effect. Now, when air moves over a wing, it basically releases as it goes behind the wing, and that creates drag. So Timothy had the neat idea to actually use some exhaust fumes or some wasted heat by the aircraft to heat the wing, and that would cause the air to stick as it passed through the wing, and that would increase fuel efficiency and basically eliminate or not eliminate, but reduce stalling as well. So it was really pretty impressive. Ambika got a fourth place award in translational medicine for, which I described to you before, for her particulate matter smartphone detection system. And Autumn Kim got a second place award in environmental engineering in $2,000 for her sponge system, which would basically remediate oil in oil and water spills. So currently, if you look at an oil boom, it only removes the surface contamination, which is, you can see on the left there. What Autumn did was she created this new sponge made out of graphite bentonite and a sponge. Then you could see the electron microscopy image at the bottom with the active ingredients. And what it does is it allows you to put the sponge in water. It sucks up the surface oil. You basically squeeze it to recover the oil. You put the sponge back, and then it actually takes out the oil that you can't see, which is really, it's a dual-phase system, which really doesn't exist at the moment. It's really pretty cool. And then finally, the Stockholm Junior Water Prize is a, is a competition. There's a basically a state winner. Our state winner for Connecticut was Elizabeth Wallace. She basically created an eco-friendly remediation system for pulling these contaminants, whether it's phosphates or arsenic, heavy metal from, you know, from these contaminated water sites. So that was recently held. And, you know, she was, this, this tip is a typical poster, just to give you an idea of what these kids actually create to compete in these different science fairs. So congratulations, Elizabeth. And thank you. I try to get through that as quick as I can. Thanks for recognizing our research students, everyone. And certainly, if you guys have any questions about what the kids are doing, feel free to reach out.
Thank you so much. Amazing work by all of our students and obviously inspired by the work you're doing in the classroom. So thank you very much. All right, with that, we're gonna move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. First, we'll start with the GHS student government tonight, represented by Kwame and Javi. If you want to come down and introduce yourself, podium.
Hello to, this is, okay, hello to all the members of the board and to the people observing. Hello? All right, all right. Hello to all the members of the board and to the people observing the meeting tonight. My name is Meredith Blanchard, and I'm the GHS Senior Class President. This is the last time that Mark Chen and I will speak here, and we cannot express enough gratitude for your willingness and enthusiasm in listening to student voices. Ironically, though this is my last time addressing this audience, it is also my first time here in person. We have had a roller coaster of a year, but the fact that I am standing here shows that there is normalcy on the horizon. Through the pandemic, I came to realize just how resilient we are as a school community, and how much our administration and faculty care about the well-being of the students. The class of 2021 missed out on many of the traditional senior activities, but we did not falter. I would like to recognize Ms. Karen Foster for diving headfirst down every avenue that would possibly make this year just a bit easier for seniors and all other students. From the new fun days, all the way to somehow pulling off a safe and fun prom, Ms. Foster was there to support student government and the student body as a whole with her dedication and openness to new ideas. It was a privilege to serve my class during this trying time, as I got to witness the adaptability that is present in the hearts of my peers. They made the best of this year, whether by attending virtual school at a friend's house or enjoying the extra sleep in the morning. I think that moving forward, we need to keep finding the positives that lay within factors out of our control. For instance, because the Student Center was modified for social distancing, we were able to open up a new avenue of conversation about how we can redesign the Student Center from the bottom up. It is that type of spirit of making positive change in the face of difficulty that has made student government such a pleasure, pleasure to serve on. We must keep this forward momentum going. I thank you again, Mr. Bernstein and Dr. Jones, for dedicating so much time to student voices. I also want to thank Mr. Mayo and Ms. Tulata for spending countless hours meeting with me and the other representatives of student government. To Mr. Silkman for keeping student government organized and running, and to all of the other administration and faculty who have helped us along the way. With an abundance of gratitude and fulfillment, I will now turn the mic over to our student body president, Mark Chen. Thank you all.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Dr. Jones, members of the board, cabinet, and meeting attendees. My name is Mark Chen, student body president at Greenwich High School. As I stand before you tonight, delivering my final address in this official capacity, I am humbled, honored, and beyond thankful, thankful for the opportunities that I've had in this role. The fact that student government is specifically devoted its own line on every agenda at every business meeting is a testament to the established culture of open and easy collaboration and communication between students, teachers, and administrators. Dr. Jones and Mr. Bernstein especially have been incredibly accessible and helpful this year, and I'm so grateful that they join us for every lunch meeting. So to our principal, Mr. Mayo, and vice principal, Ms. Tulata, who never waver in their constancy of their support for our initiatives. I would also like to recognize our student government advisor, Mr. Silkman, who in his very first year in this role helped facilitate and realize a standout year for student government. I've received email responses from him as early as 5:40 in the morning and as late as 10:00 in the evening, and his dedication is truly admirable. As we begin our transition to the next school year and move forward with tonight's meeting, I'd like to share a couple of parting thoughts. Education is the greatest equalizer that we have in our society. Its worth and resounding impact is simply immeasurable. In this, we must not shy away from topics of discomfort or controversy. It is my view that such discourse should be encouraged and facilitated to not only develop critical reasoning skills, but to expand our worldviews, to let our difference of opinion bring ourselves closer together rather than further divide. We must realize a more collaborative future grounded in substantive, productive, and respectful conversation. We must approach each other from open positions of understanding, rationality, maturity, and kindness. This is how we progress forward, and this is how we raise the leaders of the future generation. With this, I would like to introduce next year's leaders of student government, student body president Kwame Belateng and senior class president Javi Sarah. I have the great pleasure of personally knowing these fine gentlemen. They are upstanding leaders, athletes, and students who are destined to accomplish greatness. I look forward to the wonderful year that they will bring. Thank you for your time tonight. It has been my greatest pleasure and highest honor.
Um, so, good evening, board members and committee attendants. My name is Kwame Belateng. I'm a rising senior. And next year, I will be the future student body president of Greenwich High School. I'm beyond thankful to have witnessed Mark navigate through this unprecedented year. He really did a great job. Is extremely diligent and passionately advocated on behalf of the student body through his various initiatives in addition to regularly attending and speaking on this board. Although I have big shoes to fill, I'm confident in our, in our capacity to facilitate collaborative discourse that will foster a strengthened connection between GHS and our local community. Furthermore, with a quality of executive committee and an excellent student government advisor in Mr. Silkman, I look forward to what next year holds. With that being said, I'd like to introduce next year's senior class president, Javier Sarah.
Hello, board members and attendants. It is a pleasure to speak with you today. My name is Javi Sarah, and I'm a rising senior at GHS. Next year, I will be the senior class president. To reiterate what Kwame said, the work of our predecessors, Meredith Blanchard and Mark Chen, have been greatly appreciated and highly regarded by the entire student body. And we are excited to continue their dedicated efforts to improve the Greenwich High School community. I'm excited to guide the student body of GHS next year in our return to normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you again to our student government leaders. Next up is GEA Carol Sutton in her swan song.
That was a long walk. Good evening, board members, Dr. Jones, cabinet, members of the Greenwich Public School community. My name is Carol Sutton, and I'm honored to represent 900 members of Greenwich Education Association. And I'm glad to be with you and all of you in person this evening. The most sincere congratulations to this evening's honorees. We commend Mark and Meredith for their leadership at GHS. We wish them all the best in college. As always, the work of our science scholars defies imagination. Remember those names. We're gonna hear from them again. And finally, congratulations to our own Allison Fallon, this year's Teacher of the Year. You make us all very proud as you challenge your students to expand their horizons each and every day. So this is my last public comment as GEA president. And for those of you who are counting, maybe it was you, Peter, or you, Peter. It's, it's, it's about 100, 100 times I've spoken with you. And GEA greatly appreciates the permanent place on the agenda that you have and your willingness and to hear the teacher perspective. We greatly appreciate that and hope it continues. My successor, Lilian Perone, if she could give a wave, is, will be with you next year and hope to continue a good productive relationship with the board. So I hope you'll indulge me with just a little, little walk down, down memory lane. Because I'm not only ending my career as a school educator, but also as GEA president. So when I started teaching, Martin Luther King Day had just become a federal holiday. 39 years later, a new federal holiday commemorating the emancipation of slaves in Texas, it was about two and a half years late, that took a while to get the message, is heading for President Biden's desk after a unanimous vote in the Senate. Unanimous vote in the Senate. And only 14 no votes in the five, in the 435-member U.S. House of Representatives. When I started teaching, the Vietnam War was an open wound. 39 years later, the U.S. is leaving Afghanistan after 20 years with inconclusive results. The GHS class of 2021 has never lived in a nation at peace. When I began my first term as GEA president. When I began my first term as GEA president, Greenwich was in the throes of the racial imbalance issue and the implementation of a new math program, Math in Focus. Eight years and four terms later, racial imbalance has been supplanted by other pressing issues. The Big Ideas Math Program is coming to our schools, and GHS was one of eight Connecticut schools to receive a No Place for Hate designation from the Anti-Defamation League, thanks to the hard work of the faculty and students of GHS, the entire community. That the classes at GHS are as segregated as Greenwich neighborhoods is a topic for another day. And this year, many of us started the year fearing for our lives with the real prospect that the schools would become super spreaders of COVID. We didn't know. Fortunately, our school community pulled together, adhered to health protocols, followed the guidance of our superintendent, and the Greenwich Public Schools did not lose a single student or staff member to COVID. We worked tirelessly and we learned a lot. And no matter how 2020-21 tested us, we passed. The students passed, the faculty passed, the board passed, and we've come out hopeful for the next normal, the next normal. But unfortunately, our fear of the pandemic has been replaced by dismay. I won't call it fear, but it's dismay as our profession comes under attack. Many in the audience tonight are here because they believe that we, that teachers, are teaching a negative view of our country's history and our present society, or that we're exposing our dear students to harmful and dangerous ideas. Let's not forget that the mission of the Greenwich Public Schools is to prepare students to become productive, responsible, ethical, creative, and compassionate members of society. The preamble to the vision of the graduate says that our schools will prepare students to function effectively in an interdependent global community. That's what we do at Greenwich High School and in the Greenwich Public Schools. That's what we've done for my entire career. We teach and we model critical thinking, evidence-based decision-making, and productive discourse. We ask students to consult multiple sources and to evaluate those sources for reliability and to look at things, whatever the topic is, from multiple perspectives. I used to say to my students, so they'd like they'd like make fun of me, I would say, "Okay, put on your sociology glasses or put on your global studies glasses." And we'd look at the topic of the day. We ask our students to be honest and to care for self and others. And by any measure, any measure you give us, the Greenwich Public Schools is one of the most successful school systems in this country. And if you need some evidence, look at Mark, look at Meredith, look at the new officers, look at our science scholars, look at our Teachers of the Year. And so I leave you with one very simple idea. We can't protect our students from ideas. We can only prepare them for ideas. And that's what the teachers will continue to do. Thank you so much again for inviting the teacher perspective. Yes, Peter, you've been asking for a T-shirt for how many years? I don't know, but I finally have one for you. And I have some stickers. I'll get some more T-shirts from the car. And the student leaders can have a little, you know, I admired you guys all year, so you can be honorary member. You know, put it on your car. Don't know what it is. Thank you again.
Please be respectful. Thank you very much for your service, Carol. Next speaker is PTA Council Brian Paldunis in his last appearance with us.
Good evening. I am Brian Paldunis, President of PTA Council, representing the 15 school PTAs and the families of their members. PTA Council encourages all parents to provide input on the use of COVID relief funds being provided to the district via the district website or at any additional in-person or virtual meetings. PTA Council congratulates all of our student leaders, all of our student scientists, and Ms. Fallon this evening. Amazing job. Thank you very much. And to Carol Sutton, you can't get away yet. Thank you for 39 years and enjoy your unending spring break. One of the PTA Council's goals this year has been to be consistent in our comments and vigorous in our follow-up. We thank the district administrators who have responded to our comments and reminders, particularly in a year where everyone was taxed to their limits. For example, Bonnie O'Regan briefed the group, including PTA Council and parent representatives this week, on steps GPS has taken to follow up on recommendations presented to the BOE. Another example is Dr. Jones' communication last week to all GPS families in response to questions which emerged in recent weeks regarding curriculum or Mike Ting's work to improve our technical infrastructure or Mark D'Amico's focus on curriculum. I can mention many more names, and there's always more to do, but for this year's efforts, thank you. Our biggest thank you is reserved to our teachers, for our teachers and our support staff. You did an amazing job in a most difficult situation. I could go on, but I'm not very good with adjectives, so I will simply say thank you very much. On agenda topics, members of PTA Council provided input regarding the Strategic Plan Survey to the committee, and we thank you for listening. We look forward to a survey which will be useful in formulating the plan or at least guiding the next round of analysis. PTA Council, and I would say the much larger parent community, looks forward to the release of the Special Education Review in the follow-up discussions. We hope an open process, including parent input and direct feedback from PCG, will continue to build the trust and partnership needed to address the critical issues raised by parents. As I finish my term as PTA Council President, I want to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Jones as well as a certain unnamed virus for making life interesting this last year. When talking about getting and keeping our students in school, Council's Board of Directors used words like heroic, Herculean, relentless, successful. They provided the adjectives, not me. For all of your efforts this year under unprecedented circumstances, thank you. I almost cut this last part since Mark said it much more eloquently than I probably could, but I'm going to go ahead with it anyway. I had hoped to provide some profound words of wisdom as a reflection on the past year. Yet, as I pounded what I was thinking about, I came back to a single rather mundane word, balance. We may not always agree on what is best for our students, but I believe together we can find the best balance to move our district forward. Regardless of what side you may take on any particular issue, if we lose the desire or the means or the ability to communicate with one another about an issue, we will fail. To me, communication doesn't just mean talking, it also means listening and understanding, and it should result in action. It may not be the action you or I personally believe is appropriate to the situation, but the act of talking and listening and understanding can lead to a balance and openness which can result in actions which help educate our students. And isn't that why we are all here in the first place? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Thank you again for your services, the PTA Council President. All right, we are now at our public hearing per our meeting notice. We are going to take an hour of comments right now, and then the balance will be following the business portion of the meeting. We're going to take agenda items first, so there's inside of for agenda items, and then we're taking everybody in the order that they had signed up at agenda items first. Per our policy, you get three minutes to speak. When the timer is up, we ask that you please stop. We've got 46 people signed up. So we're going to try to get in as many as we can in that first hour so that we can get on with our meeting, and then we'll take the rest of the end. I'd ask per our policy that you please be civil. You know, civility is something that we try to teach our students. It's something that I hope the audience will understand. If we have to, we will stop you. We will turn your microphone off. We'd rather not have to do that. No cheering, booing, hollering. That really takes away time, and the more time we spend in between speakers or cheering afterwards, the less speakers we get in. So we really want to try to get everybody an opportunity to speak, but again, please be civil. If we have to, we will eventually clear the room. We do not want to do that. We'd rather continue with our meeting tonight with you in attendance. So with that, I'm going to call speakers. Some of these folks are online. Some of these folks are in person. So just bear with us. We've been working out the technical issues. This is only our second meeting back. All right, so the first speaker is James Waters, followed by Cara Filbin.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Jones, and members of the Greenwich community. Tonight, instead of focusing on what really matters here, educating our kids, you're going to hear some voices spouting misinformation and disproven ideas about critical race theory, masks, and vaccines. Rather than engage in a tit-for-tat rebuttal of obvious falsehoods, I'd like to share a personal story. I'd like to tell you about some real American patriots who are quite different than people who call themselves that. I served for 12 years as a leader in the Navy SEAL teams. The men I called my teammates were tough, smart, and mission-focused. They relied on facts on the ground to do their job, often under intense scrutiny, and they didn't let terrorists distract them from what they were trying to accomplish. I feel privileged to have served with these men, and our nation is lucky to have them. But what really distinguishes these verifiable patriots, some of the best military operators in the world, is something totally different. Among their most defining qualities by far was their humility and their genuine care for others. I found that the best SEAL operators were often the best people too. They never thought they had it all figured out, and they'd gladly make sacrifices of any sort for their teammates, families, and even innocent people in Afghanistan caught in dangerous situations. In my time in combat, we protected, in some cases saved, every single innocent civilian we came across, even if they lived in a house dominated by terrorists or it put our lives at risk. I'd posit to you tonight that this humble selflessness is indeed credible patriotism. It is founded on a genuine concern for others, not pushing a selfish agenda. And so tonight I'd suggest something pretty simple. Be a true patriot and ignore the self-regarding voices trying to distract you. Focus on what we elected you to do. Focus on building our school, public schools, in the premier system we want it to be. Focus on ensuring that our students excel. Focus on how we will bolster our crumbling school buildings. There's a lot of work to be done. Distractions founded on untruths and motivated by self-serving national media figures aren't going to help you get it done. I absolute everyone's right to speak and even to whine, but I also support our town's need to focus on what really matters. I fought overseas, lost several friends, and came back to the place I grew up. This incredible town loaded with tremendous opportunity for all of us, including our kids. Don't lose sight of your mission, nor the fact that the vast majority of this town supports you. For every sign on our streets right now, there are 100 people in your quarter. Let us know how we can help. And thank you for doing a tremendous job in a difficult time. Please keep your eye on the ball. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The next speaker is Cara Philbin, followed by Cara Schibo. Michael, I don't know if the next speaker is online. Same person, kind of place?
I do not see her in the list. If she could raise her hand.
We've got her in person.
I did. Thank you so much. It's brilliant. Not yet. It's brilliant, the new system you have, that now people can speak to different, have three minutes allocated to different agenda.
No, one, you get three minutes. Ma'am, you get three minutes, and if you want to go over, we're going to turn it off, and we will stop public comment. You're taking up time that other people could speak. You get three minutes.
Board policy and your documentation on your website.
You get three minutes to speak, and your time is running now.
It doesn't.
Please go ahead and start. You get three minutes, ma'am.
Can you start the clock now, please? Okay, can you hear me? There is an alarming pattern emerging in the Greenwich Public Schools of prioritizing social emotional learning and technology at the expense of academics. As evidenced by the data for college readiness, 2018-19 ELA performance, 79.3% for all students, 66.4% for high needs, growth 68.9% all students, 62% high needs. Math performance, 76.3% for all, 62.3% high needs. Growth, 73.7% all, 63.3% high needs. Science performance, 77.4% all, 65.8% high needs. These numbers did not get better over COVID with a directive of no direct instruction at the end of last year. Homework went only when necessary this year, and no midterms or finals this year or last year. We are at a critical point in time where district and BOE need to prioritize academics and rigor over all else so that students can realize their potential, build self-esteem and confidence through achievement and grow a love of learning. Regarding the SIR funding, very little of the 10 million is allocated to academics. The current proposal is approximately 20% academic and 80% social, emotional, and other. The school strategic plan is 10 pages of COVID and just shy of one page for academics. We are here tonight to tell you that we want the 2021-2022 strategic plan to include 10 pages of academics. Parents would like 90 to 80% of the SIR funding allocated to academics, including academic supports, learning loss, learning acceleration and recovery, grammar, reading, writing, and math interventions, tutors, extended learning time, music immersion for K-8, language immersion K through 12, science labs for 6 through 12, and midterm final preparation and immersion programs that our children can compete with their peers at neighboring private and public schools. A social emotional was the priority through COVID and doubled up in the beginning of this year. We do not want the money spent as proposed on additional social emotional learning, wraparound supports code for health centers in our schools, family and community connections, UDL, rural training, and furniture and redesign of the Greenwich High School Student Center. We would like another town hall and a Q and A to discuss how the money will be spent on academic learning loss and academics. As it seems too much money is being allocated to technology and SEL at the expense of academics, parents want transparency and financing, a set place where parents can view the money spent on outside organizations or programs and the money received from outside organizations and programs. Time.
Thank you very much. That's your time, ma'am. Our policy is 93, 25, three minutes per speaker. Thank you.
I'm going to speak to the next agenda.
No, you're not, ma'am. You're done. Aaron, please turn the microphone off. You get three minutes. I announced the policy. It's 93, 25. Feel free to take a look. Ma'am, okay, please sit down because you're now eating into time that other people could speak. Thank you very much. You can email the board if you have additional comments. She's had her time and other people have signed up. Okay, guys, we will stop the public hearing. Please, ma'am. What, you signed up using a different email, so please sit down. Ma'am, our policy is three minutes. Please sit down. Please sit down. We have 40 plus additional people, ma'am, that want to speak. You're now holding all of them up. Please sit down. You can email the board if you'd like. You may email the board if you'd like. Thank you. Aaron, can you turn the microphone off, please? Okay. Okay. Please sit down. Thank you. Okay, somebody is leaning on the lights in the back. Okay, please be careful not to lean on the lights. Thank you. All right, if you're going to continue that, we're not going to be able to continue our public hearing. Thank you. The next speaker is John Galetta, followed by Nicole Rincon.
Good evening, Board. Tonight you may hear arguments that support critical race theory in our education system. These viewpoints. These viewpoints come from a complete misunderstanding of what critical race theory actually is and how its curriculum affects all schoolchildren K through twelve. I call on the board to listen and understand what I will be displaying about what CRT is and how its consequences have been disastrous for the developing minds of children my age and younger. The definition of the critical race theory is the teaching of an oversimplified version of American history through the lens solely based on race and relating these skewed teachings of the past to today's America as a means to create race conflict in order to usher in anti Western Marxist values. I call on the board to understand what CRT is not, and it's as follows. CRT is not simply the teaching of ethnic studies, Jim Crow laws, slavery and difficult times in our nation's past. And we're not calling on the removal of these teachings of these events whatsoever. We must make this distinction. And now understand what CRT looks like in practice. CRT oversimplifies American history while using social constructionism and storytelling to paint a broad and vague picture that supports their narrative, that being race conflict. CRT uses historical revisionism of major events to provoke those learning to understand all events through the guise of race, more specifically through the lens of the oppressor and the oppressed. This teaching becomes very dangerous to young minds. It is not acknowledged that America has recognized its mistakes in the past and has amended those in favor of liberty and equality of opportunity under the law. Greenwich Public Schools has openly admitted to teaching and supporting a faction of CRT known as diversity, equity and inclusion. G P S seems to not understand what CRT is because they denounced the teaching of it, yet directly support its messaging. Critical race theory is derived from and adopted from critical theory, which is the social philosophy established by the Frankfurt School in the nineteen thirties Germany, whose theoreticians regularly drew from Karl Marx and Sigmund Freud. According to the Board of Education Book of Policy and Regulation Code four one one eight point two one title academic freedom. It states that academic freedom is not absolute and it must follow certain responsibilities. The first responsibility reads as follows, understanding of our democratic tradition and its methods. Reading this policy, my question to the board then is, how could factions of CRT be in the curriculum when the theory directly goes against the Board of Ed Policy? Since CRT derives directly from critical theory, which was based off Marx's writings and the name of the principles of democracy and the policy of the B O E, I call on the board to reassess this curriculum, which seeks to divide, create conflict and misrepresent and rewrite American history in order to usher in Marxism.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, folks, we want to keep moving with our public hearing. The next speaker is Nicole Rincon. All right, guys, you're eating into the hour, so it's really not going to help anybody. All right, the next speaker is Nicole Rincon, followed by Alyssa Diamond Fields.
Hello, my name is Nicole Rincon and I'm speaking in support of critical race theory in our public schools because it will benefit all students. An education on racial bias.
Please be respectful.
History.
Honestly.
Will help students who face discrimination, understand their experiences and prevent other peers from being aggressors of racial bias. I myself am a product of Connecticut Public Schools. I attended Julian Curtis Elementary, Central Middle, Greenwich High, Nora Community College and the University of Connecticut. It wasn't until my freshman year at Yukon that I studied critical race theory in the classroom. In two thousand and fourteen, my Palestinian professor taught me the intersectionality of race, class and gender. I learned of oppressive systems and unlearned how to perpetuate them. Thanks to that curriculum, I continue to learn the complexities of different identities and unlearn my own bias to this day. Although I didn't study theory in Central and G H S, that is where I learned to understand racial bias. I cannot speak to the experiences of all black indigenous and people of color students, but I can speak on my own as a first generation Colombian American. I often had to defend my right to exist in this country. I had to learn how to debate my peers and teachers, not only in history classes during discussions on immigration, but in English and physics class and any class that randomly inspired xenophobia. My friend group at the time was diverse ethnically and racially, so we began having conversations in the student center regarding our different experiences and learning from one another. Those conversations taught me how to discuss race and ethnicity without my blood boiling and eyes welling up. I'm grateful for pursuing that knowledge both in and out of the classroom because I've had these difficult conversations for years with friends, family, peers, professors, coworkers, bosses, and more recently protesters, organizers, politicians and journalists. I'm inspired to come and speak here today because of the young students I've met at Black Lives Matter protests locally this past year. With the with them pursuing this knowledge at protests, they deserve the opportunity to learn critical race theory in the classroom. They also deserve more black indigenous people of color faculty members in their schools and their input in this curriculum and other subjects matter. I'd also like to add that the recent Witness Stones Project at the Historical Society demonstrates that Greenwich private schools already have developed complex curriculum regarding race and aren't receiving backlash for it. If we remove critical race theory from our public schools, we're putting them at a further disadvantage to their private school counterparts. Lastly, many who are opposed to critical race theory bring up cancel culture. However, people who study racial bias and unlearn their own biases are less likely to be exposed as racist or held accountable for having bigotry. The best way to prevent someone being kicked off of a sports program or an undergrad program or fired for a job for being racist is by teaching them to be anti racist. Education will not result in hate. Only ignorance will cause hate. The latter has been demonstrated to me from people of Greenwich in the past year. We must acknowledge educates. We must acknowledge the racist history nation of our town.
Please be respectful. You want people to be respectful when you speak. Please be respectful. The next speaker is Alyssa Diamond Fields, followed by Gail Lordson. Please be respectful. Honestly, you want them to be respectful when you speak. Be respectful of everybody's point of view.
Good evening, Chairman Bernstein, Board members, Dr. Jones and community members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Alyssa Diamond Fields. I have a sixth grade daughter here in town and I couldn't be more grateful that our K eight kids were able to have full in person learning this year and the job that our district and schools pulled off should truly be celebrated. The issue I'd like to address today is the emerging discrimination, shaming and bullying with regard to COVID vaccines. Several of the private schools have reportedly sent emails to parents stating that vaccinated children will be welcomed back in the fall without masks and those non vaccinated will have to continue wearing them as well as forego sports and extracurricular extracurricular activities. While this was thankfully not a discussion we've seen from our public schools, it's deeply concerning to see any schools and universities coercing parents and teens into rushing these experimental shots. What is equally concerning is that our news media has been glossing over issues as they are coming out and always playing up the narrative that the shots are completely safe and the only path forward is that everyone must be vaccinated for us to return to normal. Our kids are being taught that anything questioning the safety of these experimental products is dangerous misinformation. The F D A approved the shots for emergency use in those twelve and over. They held a meeting last week to determine what data would be needed to grant emergency authorization for kids under twelve. Several of the advisors spoke on the need to wait until the risks are more clear as children are known to be at both low risk of severe disease as well as hospitalization. There were concerns brought up of an increased signal for heart inflammation in those under thirty and the C D C will be holding an emergency meeting tomorrow to discuss the three hundred cases they're working through. It should be noted that the C D C's under reported VAERS system vaccine adverse event reporting system has captured over eight hundred of these cases. When teens started getting vaccinated in Connecticut two months ago, we saw reports of at least eighteen teens hospitalized with heart inflammation a few days after their second shot. All of these kids will have to be on medication and not able to do activities for six months to a year. I've been hearing many anecdotal stories of weird menstrual changes in women of all ages and when I searched the those issues on VAERS, I found over eighteen thousand reports of irregularities following COVID shots. In better news, several new studies are emerging pointing to long lasting immunity in those who have recovered from COVID even with mild cases. A Washington University bone marrow study found plasma cells producing antibodies which would be expected to continue indefinitely, according to the authors. This would suggest.
Seconds.
Oh, man. All right, well, as as most as most of the at risk adults and teens have been vaccinated and as our hospitalization rates have dropped to under fifty people in all of Connecticut, we can hopefully all take a deep breath, let our kids run free without masks and let people freely decide without consequence when and if they want to participate in these ongoing clinical trials set to end in twenty twenty three. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Gail Lordson, followed by Daniel Shiltern. Yeah, you're here in person.
The Greenwich School District is recipient of over sixteen million dollars in COVID emergency relief grants. The most recent nine million is yet to be spent with twenty percent set aside for academics. For the record, that seems low. Regarding academics, there is concern in town over some lawn signs about critical race theory, CRT in the school curriculum. One town resident wrote in social media, Greenwich Republicans support these values, so it looks like the signs will stay up as long as it takes for every person of color to get the message. They are not welcome in Greenwich. Another town resident says CRT is leftist indoctrination that forces children to look at the world through a racist lens. We need to teach our children how to think, not what to think. The inevitable accusation of racist serves as a damper to free speech. What is similar in those two statements is the sense of political discord. I also saw in a Greenwich Time article stating the Greenwich Public School District does not teach critical race theory. Okay, then why have all the Greenwich teachers been assigned to read White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo? Here's a quote from the book. The mere suggestion that being white has meaning often triggers a range of defensive responses. Though white fragility is triggered by discomfort and anxiety, it is born of superiority and entitlement. D'Angelo also writes, I believe that white progressives cost the most daily damage to people of color. Keisha King, a Florida mother, has been subject of a recent school board viral video. She said CRT puts our children down, putting them in these oppressor oppressed categories. As a mother of two black children, I am concerned about how critical race theory will harm black kids who are being told they are less capable and will accomplish less than their white peers do solely to their skin color. So it's clear that there are two sides to this coin and those sides seem to be drawn clearly down the middle of the political aisle and that's where I have a problem. Please don't waste valuable classroom time with political reeducation. The classroom must be a safe haven for children from all political spheres. I ask you to scrutinize all new requested programs. Federally funded or not, what are the goals? Is there a political doctrine? Does it take time from academics? What might be the downside? The decision and the responsibility lies with you. General statutes of Connecticut, section ten dash two twenty states, the board must develop, review and approve all curriculum. Have you the board reviewed and approved the the curriculum, the new curriculum? Chairman Bernstein and Vice Chair Stowe.
Second.
I would ask you to put parents, students and taxpayers first, follow your policies and do not allow the school system to become politicized. Please put in writing in a letter to the administration that the Greenwich Public Schools must not teach politically charged material, including any form of critical race theory, including D E I, say S E I and any curriculum that is not approved by the B O E. If that over nine million dollars in funding is attached to canned programs of political ideology, then I respectfully suggest we don't need it.
Time.
The goal here is to keep. Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Daniel Shiltern, followed by Carrie Huckstock.
How you doing? All right. My family and I are from New York. My kids are unvaccinated. In two thousand and nineteen, they lost the right to go to school and any school was stripped away from them from Cuomo. We moved to Greenwich last year with the hopes that our kids would attend school. This year we continue to homeschool because we thought putting our children behind masks all day was not an option for us. We care about health and for our understanding that will never come from covering your mouth and breathing in your own CO two. In April, our children's rights to go to school in Connecticut was stripped away by Governor Vermont since they were not grandfathered in before the law changed. And once again, they lost the right to attend school, any school. I'm here today because I'm sick and tired of being persecuted. Our children, all children and all families who think differently than the CNN or Dr. Fauci are being persecuted. A word defined as an act or practice of harassing or oppressive treatment, especially the infliction of injuries such as loss of property or civil rights, physical suffering or death as a punishment for adhering to some opinion or course of conduct as a religious creed or a mode of worship which cannot be properly regarded as criminal. We are being persecuted. This just so happens to be Pride Month. How coincidental. Pride Month is supposed to represent equality. We see rainbow flags and decorations everywhere. Major corporations have changed the color of the logo and the rainbow to show their over the top support for equality. If everyone is truly for equality, then my children have should equal rights to go to school. Their family should have equal rights to decide what health means to them based on their own experiences and the uncensored science they choose to read and follow. Now you may think everything I'm saying today is unjustified because of science. Because please remember that science once told us that African Americans were inferior to whites and that homosexuals could be changed or fixed with pharmaceutical drugs and therapy. And whether you do or do not realize it, well educated, even Ivy League scientists are being censored for bringing new yet unwelcome science to the table for discussion, especially since this whole COVID fiasco began. Every single day you you need only to look outside the pharmaceutical owned mainstream media. True science is gray areas and is continuously changing or is at least open to changing. This is exactly why choice matters when it comes to health. Wearing a mask, wearing a mask that cuts the flow of oxygen to a young child's brain should be pro choice, not mandated. Group think mentality and the lack of free thought is a problem here. And that is not science and affluent and presumably well educated town of Greenwich, I'm appalled to see that most don't even question the narrative. Most don't even ask why. And the freedom to truly be you is actually suppressed regardless of how many rainbow flags are flown.
Time.
I'll just skip down.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Carrie Huckstock, followed by Aaron Johnson.
Ms. Huckstock is at home. Ms. Huckstock, you are talking permitted. Feel free to start.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Ed members and Dr. Jones. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Glenville School P T I. Recently, there have been many concerns surrounding our curriculum. As a P T I, we value and believe in equality education that prepares our children to be well rounded global citizens. We also value our teachers and appreciate all they do to support and enrich our children. We also value the parent teacher relationship and believe that we are partners in learning. With that being said, we would like you to remain focused on consistency and transparency. Please do not fail our students. We are counting on you to deliver a curriculum that is fair and balanced across all schools. For example, every third grader across the district should be learning the same materials utilizing the same resources. In regards to transparency, we simply ask to be informed on a regular basis. What topics will be covered in class and what materials will be used to teach the lessons? It would be helpful to receive this information three months prior to the teachings. There seems to be a consensus that a three month window would be achievable for both G P S to provide the info and for the parent to review. Lastly, we continue to have concerns over the amount of screen time our youngest students are exposed to. Technology most definitely provides a positive contribution to learning, but it cannot replace the necessary developmental skills young children need to succeed in life. In particular, they need more time to develop their fine motor skills such as writing, coloring and using scissors and more face to face communication and interaction. So as we continue, let's be mindful in striking a healthy balance. If together we can achieve consistency and transparency, then as a community, we can master the excellency we know all of our children can achieve. They will thrive and be prepared for the future. Thank you and have a wonderful summer.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is Aaron Johnson and will be followed by Sukie Orrich.
Good evening, Aaron Johnson, G P S staff member and outgoing G E A First Vice President. Good evening, Board and Superintendent Jones. I'm speaking to you to encourage the administration to reinstate the frozen media job at EMS, our largest nationally recognized and highest performing middle school. Also to reinstate the frozen media assistant positions, both the C M S and G H S. Moreover, the media coordinator needs to be reinstated for the department services. Moreover, the media coordinator needs to be reinstated for the department services to continue to thrive. The CMS media department has been that MA for a year and a half. This position was not filled when the MA transferred to another school. MAs are essential workers that keep buildings running and they're building functioning and their building is currently functioning with an extreme deficit. MAs promote reading and set up monthly book displays, gather and organize book collections for teachers, printing and laminating for large teacher materials, distribute loaner Chromebooks, which is not part of their job description. For daily use and Lincoln testing, for example, at WMS, our MA distributed 250 loaners for our last testing session. Manage media space inventory and collect overdue books and missing assets. It is no surprise that over the last five years, three distinguished teachers have been from the media department. They're the superheroes of our buildings. We serve every staff member in the building as well as every student. Moreover, during the last 15 months, the media department has helped the staff switch gears to full remote and then transition to a more media, a more hybrid model. The frozen, the eliminated position at EMS will create a huge inequity across the district middle schools. Few if any chances to promote reading to students. No media support for new student teacher device implementation. Limited time to manage the school website, limited availability to support teachers of their curriculum and assured experiences, limited availability to collaborate with teachers that would benefit from having another certified teacher and understanding that will make before and after school opportunities almost impossible. Greenwich Public Schools have always been a champion of the media department. The current administration is irrevocably creating inequities across buildings by slashing the department. The current practice of freezing positions does our staff and students a disservice. And there have been no plans for a reorganization of the media program with half the staff. Our department does not know who to contact with problematic issues and emails sometimes go unanswered. Moreover, changes in June do not allow the public to voice their concerns about the reduction in staff. Please follow the guidelines put forth in the budget book, page 274 to 276, and restate the above positions and utilize one of the best assets to their fullest potential.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is Silky Ulrich, followed by Catherine Le Balbo.
My name is Soka Ulrich and I'm a parent with three children in elementary, middle and high school at GPS. I've been a member of the PTA Executive Board for 10 years and currently holds a VP of Education position at NMS. However, tonight I am speaking as a private citizen and a concerned parent. The Academic Excellence Committee read a statement at the last BOE meeting. Here is the portion of that statement. As a PTAC committee, we continue to strive for consistency, transparency and excellence in our school system. We express our gratitude for our teachers and their expertise. We hope in a transparent process and a curriculum for grades K through 12, our need for consistency in that curriculum within grades and across school buildings and our belief that Greenwich has and can continue to offer an excellent academic experience for all students, given that we work together respectfully. It is my understanding that the Connecticut duties of Boards of Educations as outlined in section 10-220 shall provide an appropriate learning environment for all its students, which includes first and foremost adequate instructional books, supplies, materials, equipment, staffing, facilities and technology. Further, in section 10-221, Boards of Education shall prescribe rules for the management studies, classification and discipline of the public schools. In other words, you, the BOE, have to approve the curriculum, have access to the curriculum and therefore have the capacity to give parents the curriculum. The Board of Ed is also accountable for the curriculum. This is a public school funded by taxpayers. As such, we have the right to know in advance what is being taught to our children. This is not micromanagement, similar to a syllabus, including books, articles, films, materials, presentations and video clips. Parents can opt out if the material is unsuitable. Just to be clear, teachers are not to blame here. They are doing what they're hired to do, teach a BOE approved curriculum. The BOE needs to be transparent, consistent with curriculum and all appropriate learning materials across all schools and grades. Tell all staff they are not permitted to email minors and they need to provide opt in for topics of a mature and complex nature, including or related to sex, gender, violence, drugs and alcohol, politics and race with an alternate assignment option. Transparency is the only way to move forward.
Thirty seconds.
When there is no transparency, it breeds distrust. The BOE is here to represent the best interests of our students first and give them the best and appropriate education that our tax money can buy. Chairman Bernstein and Kathleen Stowe, do your job and create a policy to protect our children from exposure to over sexualization, violence and political views in the classroom. Make certain all curriculum is approved by the BOE and taught with fidelity.
Time.
All right, the next speaker is Catherine Le Balbo, followed by Lee Galetta.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Le Balbo. I'm the current chair for the RTM on the Park and Recreation Committee, but I'm here tonight speaking as an individual. Because in that role, I've seen the detriment to our educators, students and the entire community at large when fields go unremediated and remain out of service. So I'm here tonight to speak on an item that I believe is on your agenda tonight and what the Board of Education will have control over as a high impact for positive change for our students. And it's what I hope you will be focusing on in your debate tonight. Families at Western Middle School are still waiting. For years, they have been waiting for full access to their fields. And I ask that we commit and plan, as I've asked in previous to the BET and other members on the RTM, that we commit and plan for financing for this project in the next budget cycle. So there'll be no additional delays once approvals are in place. I'm confident that you'll not be distracted from your duties tonight and responsibilities to provide equitable facilities and safe educational environments indoors and outdoors to the families of Greenwich. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so next up is Lee Galetta, followed by Logan Galetta. We have Lee, followed by Logan.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your time this evening. Thank you for listening to the community this evening. I am Megan Galetta, mother of four children and a resident of Greenwich for 20 years. My children are currently in and have gone through the Greenwich School System and range from the ages 15 to 23. I am here this evening to express my deep concern that our schools are becoming politicized. For decades, Greenwich has been known as a strong district supporting the needs of all students with a robust and rigorous curriculum. In fact, it is a major reason why our town is sought after by many families across the country and world. My kids received an excellent education in a non-politicized school system. Because of the enriching curriculum and diverse extracurricular offerings, my two oldest were accepted into top colleges. They have both graduated and my youngest is a ninth grader at GHS. One of the strengths of our district has been that we've never allowed politicized conversations or activism sourced from the top down into the classroom. Children should be encouraged to hold respectful conversations about politics in the classroom, fostering debate and discovery as they learn from multiple perspectives and sources. It's obvious that the ugly nasty political discourse in Washington has now infected Greenwich schools. It's like a disease in our schools and it needs to stop. We need to return to our strong community based values and foundation as a school system that does not allow politics to infiltrate and indoctrinate. It's imperative, the board emphasizes, building relationships and rapport amongst the students and community, creating an open environment for collaboration and cooperation. BOE, I have done my homework and have read the BOE policy document. And it's clear to me that you are not administering the policies of the board. Rather, you are allowing material to be taught that has not been approved. I am asking you, our elected representatives, Mr. Bernstein and Ms. Stowe, for you to step up for the parents and taxpayers in the town to make it very clear to your single employee, the superintendent, that the GPS is not a political zone. We want you to do what is required by law and by the board policies. Here are three things. Provide a letter to the superintendent that states politics will not be tolerated in GPS and make the letter public. We want you to ask the superintendent to send a letter to the staff that reiterates this and that should also be made public. We want all course material to be made public so parents can review it beforehand and not after the curriculum is delivered. Finally, we the concerned parents and taxpayers of this town deserve better. We need to be checking in with our community and making sure our schools are quality, safe and supportive learning environments for all students. As parents, we want to ensure the board is held accountable for their to their role and responsibility in allowing unapproved materials to slip through the cracks. In addition, per the Board of Ed policy, we need to make sure that we, the materials are appropriate for the intellectual and emotional development, that they have a concern for the welfare, growth, maturity and development of children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next signed up speaker was Logan. Thank you. The next signed up speaker was Logan Galetta, followed by David Lancaster. You already spoke. Okay, so you were on there twice. Okay, so the next speaker is David Lancaster, followed by Christian Neminsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In May of this year, a bill was introduced in the Pennsylvania House that will likely pass, requiring all school, public schools to post the curriculum plan and materials online for parents to easily review before the school year starts. School websites are required to be updated for any changes in curriculum, including textbooks and copied articles. Legislators here in Connecticut are actively looking to support parents in their quest for curriculum transparency. The Greenwich Board of Education should take the lead in Connecticut by instituting this curriculum transparency plan for the fall semester across all grades without exceptions. If you are confident of the quality of the materials that are presented to the students, you should have absolutely no problem posting them on a website for parents to see before the semester starts in time for them to be able to review the materials their children will study. Second point is I would also like to clarify a few matters regarding critical race theory. I direct this to the Board of Education, particularly Mr. Bernstein and Vice Chairman Stowe. It has been claimed by the administration that there is no intent to institute CRT in Greenwich Public Schools, when in fact it is already part of the curriculum through its many tentacles like SEL or when teachers and administrators are encouraged to read White Fragility. Parents are therefore not misinformed. They are very aware and that awareness is growing every day. This board needs to stand up and make it abundantly clear publicly that this racist curriculum and its tentacles has no place in our public schools. We are not calling for the elimination of ethnic studies, which CRT is not, nor are we racists. We are working towards fulfilling the exact same dream of a colorblind society Dr. King spoke of and died for. And I think we can all agree that Dr. King was not a racist. We support ethnic studies and histories of all kinds in our schools, particularly those of African Americans who have suffered disproportionately in our country's history. Banning CRT from being taught is not evidence of systemic racism, but a rejection of an untruth that conflicts with our universal understanding of the nature of man and the founding principles of this country. If someone were to suggest that schoolchildren study the national socialist understanding of the superiority of some races and nations as a valid historical interpretive tool, all sane persons would recoil in horror like we do with CRT. Opposition to CRT is a multiracial cutting across all geographies and party lines and is growing. Why? Because the attempt to prove that all men are not created equal by virtue of their skin color is so odious to the fundamental values of Americans and is the very definition of racism. The more people learn about CRT, regardless of their political persuasion, the more they are repelled by it. And those numbers are growing, especially in this town. CRT does not resonate in the hearts of everyday Americans, nor should it be taught to our children. Children who are exposed to this theory over an extended period and successive grade levels, I predict will emerge from their public education both ignorant and angry. I urge the Board of Education to demand the removal of all CRT light, agenda driven, social engineering from all curriculums in the Greenwich Public Schools immediately. For the good of the children, their families, our town and the country. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Kristin Neminsky, followed by Jackie Homan. All right, next speaker after that is Jackie Homan.
Thank you. I believe ESER funding should be spent on making up for lost academics from the shutdown. We need more science labs, technical and trade classes, music classes, more school instruments to loan and mandatory grammar classes. My children have not been taught grammar and I have one in middle school and one in high school. Just a few days ago, my daughter said there was a question in her English class and some reading they did, but no one could answer it because they didn't know what an adverb was. My son has been taught what pansexual means, but not what prepositional phrase is. This is an academic failure by our schools. What we do not need to spend ESER money on is social emotional learning. We need factual learning. I want my daughter to be an architect or a doctor or a writer or many other things, but not a social justice warrior or activist. I want her to know proper grammar. I want her to know proper grammar and not to be worried about whether she's using someone's preferred pronoun or not. I don't want her taught that she was born racist because she's white. In the same way, I don't want her to be told that her country is racist. 700,000 Americans died in the Civil War to rid our country of slavery and America has done more for minorities and people in need around the world than any other country. We are not racist. We cannot allow CRT to poison the minds of our children. Children are not born racist, but that is what CRT teaches. We all support teaching history, the good, the bad and the ugly. CRT is not history or ethnic studies. It's just what they like to call it so they can call you a racist, shut you down and slip it through for parents not paying attention. In Dr. King's dream, people no longer see each other's skin color. In CRT, all you see is skin color. Everything is seen through a racial lens. It is not inspiring. It is demoralizing. It is not uplifting. It is demeaning. The proponents like to call it ethnic studies or racial sensitivity or social emotional learning or many other names. But what it is, is a radical racist ideology and it has no place in our schools. Does the Board of Ed think Greenwich is racist? Does the administration think the staff is racist? Why did they need to read Robin D'Angelo's White Fragility? I suggest you all read the article in the Atlantic entitled "The Dehumanizing Condensation of White Fragility", written by John McHorder, a black man. Now they want to push this racist ideology onto our teachers. Does the administration think GPS teachers are racist? CRT instills racism in people by assigning group think or other attributes to people based on the color of their skin. Children are not born racist. Why does the school want to label them by the color of their skin and teach them that they are different? We should be concentrating on how much we are the same. That is how you rid the world of racism. Teach them love, not blame. Teach them the value of a good economic education, hard work and perseverance, not privilege and oppression. Our issue is not with the teachers in general. We love and appreciate our teachers. It's with the steady push in curriculum across the country to indoctrinate our children with political and social justice views and turn them into activists. Stop politicizing our schools and our children. Our kids should come home thinking about math, science, history and English, not race and gender. Give our children facts and let them be critical thinkers and formulate their own opinions. Schools should be the neutral purveyors of facts.
Thank you very much. All right, the next speaker is Jackie Homan. Folks, we're trying to get through more speakers. So Jackie Homan followed by Carl Homan.
Thank you. Over the last week, concerned parents placed hundreds of yard signs around Greenwich to encourage the community to stand up to protect their children from dangerous curriculum like critical race theory, to unmask our children and to protect their medical freedoms. Most of the signs were stolen or vandalized and often in broad daylight. It was a rather brazen attempt to stifle free speech, in my opinion. But it didn't work. In fact, it had the opposite effect since people wanted to know who was responsible for the amazing signs. And I think some of them turned out here to let you know what they think. When the yard signs were attributed to me, I became the subject of rumors from a Facebook group you all know. The rumors are untrue and could be easily disproved if the concerned person who made the anonymous post decided to ask. I thought we didn't tolerate bullying in Greenwich, but as the victim of some rather vicious personal attacks over the last two weeks, I know otherwise. People who have associated with me have now become the subject of bullying and intimidation tactics as well. I can assure you, these tactics don't work on us. It seems when you can't attack the message, you attack the messenger. Because the truth is, this content being presented to our children is indefensible. How many F bombs are appropriate for your ninth grader to read in his homework? How many times does the word rape have to be used in English class? When did curriculum shift from books like To Kill a Mockingbird to articles that tell my child how to write about Africa? I encourage you all to take a look at my posters that I was not allowed to put outside of the building because the board changed the rule about that. They're right here on the side. Please take a look. That's from our homework. It's about the most racist thing I've ever heard. Now I find myself having to fend my children from the dangerous ideology of critical race theory, which says my children were born racist simply because they're white. How can that be? Is that what my neighbors really think about me? That because I was born white, something that I can't change, that I'm a racist, that my children are racist, that everything they do must be viewed through the lens that everything they do must be viewed through the lens of systemic racism? When are we going to get back to academics instead of activism? Why not teach them how to think instead of what to think? Why not value diversity instead of indoctrination? Vice Chairman Stowe, the board needs to immediately tell teachers to stop using unapproved curricular materials, especially ones laced with profanity and highly sexualized content. The board must start following its own policies and use good taste and judgment when selecting and approving curriculum. As a matter of fact, it's unclear whether the current curriculum has even been approved according to the board's own policy. What is ruler exactly, Vice Chairman Stowe? Chairman Bernstein, the board needs to demonstrate leadership and adopt a policy against CRT in all its forms. This includes social and emotional learning, which we all know is just a euphemism for CRT. The board is not fulfilling your legal responsibilities and instead you are allowing our school to get transformed into a social justice indoctrination center. You should be ashamed.
The next speaker is Carl Homan. All right, folks, please. We're running up against time, so we want to try to get a couple more speakers in. The next speaker is Carl Homan. Is he here? Okay. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alyssa Barelli, followed by Frances Nobe. No, you cannot. That does not work. Sorry. The next speaker is Alyssa Barelli. Alicia Barelli. No, thank you. We've got other speakers. No, you had your three minutes. I'm sorry. Please go ahead. There are other, it is our policy. Thank you. Other people are going to speak now. Please be courteous. We listen to you. Now let others speak.
Thank you. Our community is not concerned with whether our district will adopt the harmful rhetoric of CRT. The concern is that critical race theory is already very much here and deeply embedded in our district culture and school curriculum already. Western Middle School hosted a speaker when my son was a student there in 2018, who told an auditorium full of our young students that white children should be passed over for jobs someday to make our country more fair for others. This school year, a child was allowed and encouraged to create and present a PowerPoint that included anti-white ethnic shaming in the form of entirely made up negative and fictional racial imaging and stereotyping for the purpose of inciting resentment. There is a bulletin board, I believe, currently hanging in this district that promotes racism, misogyny and antisemitism and distinctly calls on students to take part in speaking out against anyone who rightly disagrees with such messaging containing specific wording that calls for silencing objectivism. Using community resources and our trusted educational institutions to coerce students to not only accuse, but go after one another by insulting, by insisting that students are obligated to become active agents of anti-racism may certainly be woke, but it is so in that dangerously irresponsible way. And our school district isn't just condoning this. Our school district is actively encouraging it. I certainly hope that the Stand Up to Hate Day scheduled to take place in Greenwich High School next year does not become just another exercise in criticizing and vilifying white people or males. What hate exactly is being stood up to on this day? Can I guess? Will it be the systemic and inherent and privileged hate of toxic, toxic white males again? Will Stand Up to Hate Day be just another day I send my child to school to receive an education, but instead, and again, he'll be unforgivably and irrationally shamed? No, thank you. Anyone who thinks critical race theory is ethnic studies is dangerously ignorant. Ethnic studies are the studies of different ethnicities. Critical race theory is a plan to use our educational institutions and resources to condition students to be critical of one another based on their ethnicities. Teaching students to find imaginary faults in themselves, to blame, judge and find reasons to resent one another, and calling it standing up to hate is not critical thinking, nor are any of these topics conducive with any core components of this district or possibly any core components of any rational and compassionate, free-thinking human being. Illogical and dishonest blame-soaked educational malpractice will not possibly help any student someday function healthily or productively in, nor help them be a part of forming any community, global or otherwise. The political and cultural morals and ethics of our children nor their bodies are available for the use of manipulative, power-tripping adults that were hired for the express purpose of providing them an education. The fact that this needs to be said is appalling. Teachers nor the governing body of this district create a climate of trust with their students or their community when they abuse their position, position over their children to make their students feel ashamed. The fact that I feel that I have to be put in this position where I feel so threatened in regard to my child's minds and body that I feel that I must show up to protect him from those who are supposed to be educating him is mind-boggling. We all have to speak up at this point to protect our children. And I ask anyone listening to get up with me and do the same. I ask the board to get up and defend our children from a virus of radical ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Frances Nobe, followed by Maria Miklojak.
Ms. Nobe is participating virtually. You are allowed to speak, Ms. Nobe.
Can you hear me? Hello? Yeah. Hi, this is Frances Wu Nobe, representing P-TAC Remote Schools Special Committee. With co-chair Bob Chaney, we have so enjoyed a year supporting and cheering on our K to 12 remote learners. Today, I attended my fifth grade girls moving up ceremony in person on the Blacktop at North Street School. To honor the incredible pandemic students of March 2020 to June 2021, Vice Principal Kathy Ramirez shared a poem by Edgar Albert Guest entitled "It Couldn't Be Done". Tonight, I will reread this poem in honor of the GPS teachers, staff and administration who taught our more than 9,000 students in person, remotely and both at the same time with sincere gratitude, appreciation and humility. Somebody said that it couldn't be done, but he with a chuckle replied that maybe it could, but he would be the one who wouldn't say so till he tried. So he buckled right in with a trace of a grin on his face. If he worried, he hid it. He started to sing as he tackled the thing that couldn't be done and he did it. Somebody scoffed, "Oh, you'll never do that. At least no one has ever done it." But she took off her coat and she took off her hat and the first thing we knew she'd begun it. With a lift of her chin and a bit of a grin, without any doubting or quitted, she started to sing as she tackled the thing that couldn't be done and she did it. There are thousands to tell you it can't be done. There are thousands to prophecy failure. There are thousands to point out to you one by one the dangers that wait to assail you. But just buckle in with a bit of a grin. Just take off your coat and go to it. Just start to sing as you tackle the thing that cannot be done and you'll do it. Congratulations, best wishes to my fellow 1,007 still fully remote learning families. We did it. You did it. Your kids did it. Your teachers did it. With our hearts very full, Bob and I officially close out the P-TAC Remote Schools Special Committee and look forward to our new roles. Yeah, we're not going anywhere. Look forward to our new roles on the P-TAC Executive Board with incoming P-TAC President Mimi Duff. We look forward to continued collaboration, connections, good cheer and courage together. For now, have a great summer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. The next speaker is Marija Miklojak. I'm probably mispronouncing. Maria? First name M A R I J A. Sorry, I'm probably really mispronouncing your name. You can help me out.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Bernstein and members of the board. My name is Maria Mikolajczyk. I'm a parent in the school district. And I'm here tonight to ask you to immediately make face masks optional for all students, teachers and staff. Each family should be able to conduct their own risk benefit analysis in consultation with their chosen medical or writer to make their own choice on mask usage. Statistics show the risk of COVID for children and most age groups is very low with a 99.99% recovery rate. We have also seen evidence that mask usage is ineffective at preventing the spread of viruses. Those who conclude that the harms of wearing masks outweigh the benefits should have the choice to not use them for themselves and their children. Those who see it differently, of course, should have the choice to continue using the mask if they want to. The covering of faces of their peers, teachers and other adults in the learning environment has negative impacts on children socially and psychologically. Communication is impaired because it is harder to hear and understand speech through masks and because they prevent visual cues from expression and micro-expressions. This seems especially important for youngest children, special needs students and during foreign language instruction. Again, those who conclude the harms of mask wearing for their children's learning outweigh their benefits should have the choice not to use them. There are also concerns about the possible negative respiratory and bacterial health effects of wearing masks. A recently published study of bacteria profiles on masks worn in a school setting showed a concerning amount of pathogenic bacteria, parasites and fungi, including those associated with causing pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis, Lyme disease, among many others, on the masks. Parents and individuals concerned about the bacterial growth in the warm, moist environment of a face mask should have the choice to not use them. Some private schools, fitness centers and other venues are now using a segregation system to pressure people into receiving the experimental COVID vaccines by requiring mask wearing only of those who do not receive the injections. Because of the number of deaths and injuries reported from these experimental vaccines, it is imperative that our schools do not participate in these discriminatory and segregatory practices that would likely result in bullying of those singled out for not taking the experimental vaccines. Masks must be a choice independent of vaccination status.
Thirty seconds.
While we understand the State Department of Health has issued guidelines, each local school board has the ability to make a better decision for their district. Other school districts within our state and in other states and even entire states have ended mask mandates with no adverse impacts. Preventative medicines, vaccinations, therapeutics and treatments for COVID are now widely available and the mandating a mask is no longer justifiable. It is time for the Greenwich School Board to be leaders in doing what is right and allow our children, teachers and staff to agree freely.
Thank you. All right. That represents the first hour. We're about halfway through our list, so we will resume the community comments after the business portion of our meeting. So we're going to move on to our monthly reports, starting with the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Just a couple of items tonight. First of all, we only have three more days of school, which is pretty unbelievable. In, in many ways, it seems like it was the fastest year and then the slowest as well. So I, I am very, very grateful for all of our school staff, for our students. I think what they accomplished this year was really phenomenal. So you know, thank you for being brave and I think that G E A said it well tonight. It was, it was a hard start at the beginning of the year. Everyone was nervous and I just couldn't be more grateful. We also have a graduation on Monday, which will be live. I know several of you here have seniors, so that's very exciting. We'll be on field six and seven. And we do have our special education audit. The executive summary is supposed to be delivered to Ms. Valentine tomorrow and she will post that on board docs. Once it's posted, we will make sure that's also in the family notes, so it'll be an easy link to find. Next Thursday, we do have a special meeting where PCG will be here and they will, a Wednesday. Thank you. Thank you. Twenty-third, we'll be here to present all the recommendations and the executive summary has the actual recommendations from the full report. And right when they finish presenting, they will then email the district the full report so that that can also get posted immediately. But everyone will see all of these at exactly the same time. We also have, just for those of you that have been eager about Hamad Field, we are doing the graduation on the new grass. It will be open the last two days so children can actually play on the field. They will close it for a little bit of summer, just to let it grow some more, but we're excited about that. Cardinal Stadium, if you haven't seen the pictures, I encourage you to look at the digest that went out today, but you actually, when you drive past, can see bleachers, which is very exciting. North Myanis families, I know you're eagerly waiting on the alternate site. We're very, very close. We are doing a site visit. A couple of staff are tomorrow trying to sign the last bit of an alternate, not sign, trying to get the approval then to come to the board. I also was asked at the last meeting just to share the virtual numbers. And just to give you an idea, for elementary, we started on September 15th, we had about 634 full remote students. As of June 10th, we were at 343. So we still have quite a few in remote. For middle school, started at 392 students for remote. We've ended in June at 192. High school was interesting. We started at 434 and in June, we're actually at 471. So it's a little bit higher than it was in September. That we think that's because a lot of our high schoolers have been off doing other things as well. Let's see what else. The other thing I'll just mention is we did have our S R three town hall. And that is, people were referencing that funding tonight, stopped at 9.5 million. There is absolutely no plan as of today. We are taking feedback. That's what the town hall was for. We will have the link again in the family newsletter tomorrow. We are asking for feedback. People are emailing me on a daily basis with some ideas. And right now that plan, it's very, very detailed in what the federal government requires for S R three. And that has to be submitted by mid-August. And somebody did reference the 20% tonight and I just want to make sure we obviously weren't clear enough on the town hall. We are required by the federal government to spend at least 20%. So that's what the 20% means. We absolutely will end up spending more than 20% of that for academics. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. So we will move on to reports of officers, committees and liaisons. See, Mr. Kelly.
I have some bad news. Our rugby team is in Kansas City playing for the national championship right now. Seconds ago, unfortunately, we lost 10 to 7. So a little sad news there. Sorry about that, but good news. We have Cardinal Stadium. If you drive by, like our superintendent said, we are moved, we are cooking with gasoline. We're moving quickly. The buildings are going up. The bleachers are being delivered. The site work is being, being done. So we're, we're moving forward in a nice way. Phase two, we're moving forward, not necessarily in a fast way, but we're analyzing and deciding what we want to do to go forward. So that's my report on Cardinal Stadium, phase one and phase two.
Mr.?
Yeah, just to follow, can you hear me? Yeah. Just to follow up on what Tony said, we met a couple of weeks ago as a budget committee. She's, the administration presented some ideas to us around S R funding. Then you had the town hall. We will continue to meet over the summer because as you know, we need to submit something to the state by mid-August. And so we will continue to work with the administration as a board and with the community, of course, as we take feedback to make sure that we get everything that we hopefully want. And one thing I wanted to note that we noted at the budget committee, but I think it's important, as there are a lot of people here. We actually received more than other towns because we were actually in school. And we didn't know that. We didn't know that was an incentive, so we just got rewarded for doing the right thing. But I think that's worth noting because we, people were wondering why Greenwich got so much more than other towns. And in addition to other factors such as having some Title I schools, but that also was a driving factor and something that I think we should celebrate. So, thank you.
Thanks. Other reports of officers? You want to take it? Ms. Qualki?
I'll let Karen take it. So I just wanted to talk about the special ed report that's coming out next week. And I wanted to just address, I think there are some questions about timing and the sequencing of events. And so I just wanted to lay that out a little bit more clearly for everyone that if you had questions. So as Tony mentioned, or Dr. Jones mentioned, there'll be a link tomorrow in the, her weekly, in her weekly email with the executive summary. That executive summary is going to everyone at the same time. That includes the public and the board. We have not seen that. We thought it made sense from, in order to put out the report, to give everyone time to read the executive summary and then allow PCG, our consultants who had done all of the work, to come in next week and to give their presentation on the executive summary as well as the report that none of us have yet seen in order to provide some context. You're going to have lots of questions. We anticipate you're going to have questions. I hope you have lots of questions. And if you send those questions, they will be answered. And if you send them to Ms. Hirsch and myself, we will make sure that we funnel them to PCG over the course of the next week so that they can either address them in their presentation or we can get back to you with answers in regards to those. The reason for not releasing the report yet at this time and giving you the executive summary is to provide context and to let everyone settle in with the, rather than having the full report and not having PCG explain all of the work they've done and the conclusions that they've reached. This is something new, the sequencing. Usually the board gets the report in advance and it has a chance to provide comment. We didn't do that here and we did that for a very important reason. The community has expressed a heightened concern over the transparency over special education, the studies that have been done in the past. And we didn't want that here. And we wanted to make sure that out of an abundance of caution, there was full transparency. So no one on the board has seen this report. We will all get it at the same time as the community does. And we will get, and we will have, I've talked to Mr. Bernstein this week about how we're going to through email that we're looking about how we're going to, through email, that we're looking at ways of how we can make sure that we address all of the community's comments and concerns once the report comes out. So I assure you, your voices will be heard. We expect that they're heard. And the sequencing of events is in order to make sure that the community is as happy as we are that there has been complete candor and transparency in how this report, how the research was done and the report was created. Karen, if you want to add something?
And I'll just add that during agenda planning, we will be discussing adding an additional date after the executive summary is being presented where there, as there won't be public input in comments on that night. But we will be adding an additional meeting. So in order to take public comment, once we get the full, we all get the full report as well as to start plan, action planning discussions, which hopefully we will also start after we get the executive summary, and then the board can make that decision after getting public input. So there will be additional time for public speakers to come and speak on the audit report and recommendations.
Thank you. Ms. Olson?
So first of all, just from distinguished teachers, I'd like to once more congratulate Ms. Fallon. It's phenomenal. And I also just wanted to report out quickly about Greenwich Alliance. So Avid Students had their graduation last night. It was a huge success. Forty students were in attendance, which is awesome. So congratulations to Avid Students. And just going forward, Avid Success is, is one of the newest and largest initiatives that helps Avid Students and alumni achieve college and career success by providing essential extensions to the GPS Avid experience. So in other words, basically, Avid Students get over a 10-year period through middle, high school, and beyond where they get support. Things such as, you know, good money habits, job and professional, job and professional meetings and mentoring and coaching. And Avid is still doing amazing things, as is the Greenwich Alliance. So stay tuned. I hope you don't mind. I just want to take a brief moment also to thank Ms. Sutton for her time because I actually was a student of Ms. Sutton, so thank you for your 39 years. And it's, it is, and that's not to make you feel old. That's just to make you feel special. And, and we, we share this night tonight, actually, Ms. Sutton, because this is actually my last night serving on the board as well. So I'm honored to share it with you and, because we're relocating. So I'm honored to share this night with you, and I just wanted to sing your praises for just a brief moment. That's it. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to give a quick chair update. So Megan didn't really give us a lot of time or warning. Well, she did two years, two years ago. Yeah, exactly. So we don't really have anything for you tonight, but we'll catch up with you later and embarrass you a different way. So the board will be, will be taking up, and when we get to agenda planning, we'll talk about how we're going to take up filling that seat until, for the remainder of the term, which is through November, I believe, election day sometime November 2nd. So that's what I remember. Anyway, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to our discussion items. So the first discussion item this evening is the Western Fields Update. And Dr. Jones, we have someone online, I believe, and also Principal Bindstein was here. He left. He had enough of us.
We continue to work hard since we entered into the remediation plan last spring. And Ryan Woolstrom is normally here, but tonight he couldn't be here. But Jamie Barr and Brian Phillips are both online, and I think Jamie's going to actually take it first. And as a reminder, they are with the firm Langen, who is managing the field for us. And we do also work with McCarter English is our land attorney, who's the same land attorney we use on the GHS project. So I'll turn it over to Jamie Barr.
Okay, hi, everyone. Before we start, is there a presentation or you're just talking to us?
No, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna speak to, to general update.
Thank you. Just need to know if we needed to move to screen. Yep, we're good. Go ahead.
No, no, we're good. Okay. So thanks, everyone. So as Dr. Jones said, my name's Jamie Barr. I'm a principal at Langen Engineering. You've seen Ryan Wolf from here, one of my colleagues, most of the time, but I'm here filling in tonight. So just to give you a quick update on, on kind of the progress that we've been making with the WMS remediation and athletic fields, I'll give you kind of a three-part update. First, related to, you know, ongoing negotiations and discussions with Connecticut DEP and Environmental Protection Agency on, you know, selecting, ultimately selecting a remedy for the site. We, you know, think back, we started this process, I think we were, started evaluating 10 different remedial options for the fields. Happy to say that we are essentially down to about four options that are realistic and are more realistic, and two actually that are, that are likely to be the final evaluations. I'd say that we're close because the state has asked, the state NEPA have asked us to do some additional investigation recently around the edges of the fields just to confirm some of the assumptions that we had on, in a number of our remedies. And so we're just waiting right now for comment back from the state NEPA on our proposed plan for investigation. The plan would be, once we get that approval, we would execute that work and hopefully that be that next step towards selecting that final remedy. So that's the first update. The second update is, is related to kind of the future remedy and whichever remedy is selected, there's, there's going to be logistics associated with that work. And we've started a little bit of a planning study on, you know, how we would operate the remediation with respect to trucking and access into the fields and timing of all of that work. So usually, that's, that's, it's not done this early, but, but we've, we've started that early to make sure that when that remedy is finally approved and we're at that point, we'll have all of this already thought out. So we should be a little bit ahead of the game there with that. And the, the last piece, each of these remedies, you know, has incorporated, or the last few remedies that we've been, we've been looking at, has incorporated, you know, a synthetic turf athletic fields as part of the capping system, capping component. And we've had numerous meetings and coordination meetings with various folks from the Board of Ed and the school to discuss, you know, alignment of the fields and kind of working through some concept sketches of what this, what the fields would ultimately look like and kind of started down that road of when we finally get to, to build this cap and this remedial cap, the, the turf fields will, you know, be designed and everybody will be kind of on board with that stuff. So we started the conceptual drafting of those sketches and, and running through the alignment with, with those in Greenwich. So that's basically a short and sweet update on, on where we are. Hope to hear from the state NEPA shortly and get moving on finalizing the remedy.
Jamie, this is Peter Bernstein. I've got a suggestion and a couple of questions. Suggestion is to make sure that the Parks and Rec Department is brought into that conversation if they haven't already. I presume they're already at the table.
They have been. Yes, they have been. Sorry. Yeah.
Thank you. I knew at one point we had asked at a previous meeting to make sure there's trenching for electrical and whatever else we need to run out to the field. So I take it that's already part of the design work that's happening?
So that's, yeah, that's part of what Brian Phillips, one of my colleagues, who's also on the, on the call as part of the civil group, are, you know, pulling together as part of the design for the fields, for the turf fields. Yes.
Okay, just one last closing one before I turn it over to my colleagues. I've got to ask the timing question because this has gone on for quite a long time. And, and while it sounds like you, you know, you've got the next meeting scheduled and you're always good about getting the follow-up meetings. Is there a projected timeframe at this point for this project to be able to move forward?
I don't know. It's, it's not entirely in our hands. You know, this, this, we're in a voluntary remediation program with the state. The EPA is involved. We're trying to work as quickly as possible with them to come to a resolution. It looks like this investigation that they've most recently requested is kind of the final piece to, to shore up some of our assumptions in the design. And if that is the case, then we'll be able to move on, on finalizing the, you know, an approvable design very quickly. I, I can't say timing-wise how, you know, once the designs, we can complete a design quite quickly once everybody's on board, the state's on board with it. I think it has to go through a process of vetting and, and comment. But, so I don't know how, how lengthy that process will be or the procurement of the services for, you know, construction and whatnot. That would be completely out of our, our control. But I, we're, we are, in terms of environmental remediation, I feel we are very close to honing on an approvable remedy. I just can't give you a timeframe. I just, I'm sorry.
No, we, we understand. I mean, we know we don't control the process, but just as long as we're doing everything we can to move it along, and it sounds like you are. All right, Ms. Downey?
Yeah, well, just a belated timing question. I'm really happy to hear that you're kind of planning for the process while simultaneously to the design so that we're kind of running in parallel. Is this the type of the logistics of doing it? Are we limited by only doing it in the summers? Because if you're planning, then it's like, are we, are we already booking into next summer? Or is this the kind of thing that we may be able to do during the school year as you're looking at the logistics element to it? Just so we can give our community a sense of if, once we get approval, what we're looking at? Or is it going to default to next summer anyway?
So, so in terms of the evaluation, and we're discussing it with WMS and Dr. Jones, we're considering, you know, what would it look like if we had to do it during the school year, which is part of the discussion on the logistics of where, where, where do trucks come in? How does this, how would, how would it get fenced off? How would every, you know, the areas be protected? Where would the air monitoring stations be set up during the work? So we're, we're kind of considering it, all scenarios in terms of can, can we do? It can certainly, could certainly be done. It's just a matter of how do you protect the areas outside of any of the remediation areas? And, and, you know, essentially, the, the whole field eventually will likely have some level of excavation across it, not just, not just select areas. So the sequencing of that could be tricky if, if, if school is in. But no, no decisions have been made yet in terms of, you know, around-the-clock school year summertime. But we are looking at, you know, what the impact would be.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Hey, Jamie, I got one simple question. And it is, is there anything that the Board of Education can do to get this moved along more quickly? I ask this question because I worked, or I'm working, I am working on the stadium project, and that is my first public project. I've worked on multiple private projects for many, many years. I lose a lot of tools in my toolkit in that project. I lose the ability to bonus, and I lose the ability to fire. Now, with those things lacking or missing, I find that there are some things I can't accomplish as quickly as I could in the private sector. So could you tell me, is there anything, absolutely anything, the Board of Education can do right now to move this along more quickly?
I, I think I would have to say, from what I know, your capabilities are. I, you know, I don't know everything, but I would probably say no. This is, this is ultimately going to be approved by the state, needs to be approved by the state and EPA to move it forward. And we're doing everything we can to meet with them and, you know, execute assessments as quickly as possible, turn around work plans as quickly as possible. And once we're at that point where they say, okay, here are the remedies that are approvable, we'll turn around the design very, very quickly. I don't know that there's anything that can be done to push an approval when there's still some data that, that both the state and EPA would like to see before, before we start discussing the final remedy.
Thank you, Jamie. That was a good answer. And just to add to that slightly, if you do come up with something, please contact me or all of us immediately with what that is. Thank you.
Happy to do so.
All right, Ms. Kowalski?
Sure. Hey, hi, Jamie. It's Karen Kowalski. Question for you. You had mentioned we've gone from 10 remedial options to four options to two likely final options. What are those remedial options? What, what does that entail?
Well, I, I won't, I don't have them in front of me, the 10, because we, but I can give you just essentially what, what they consisted of. There were varying, varying volumes of excavation, right? So depending on chemical concentration and depth in the ground and location where they were, we played around with those numbers and ran those through health risk models to see what was still safe. So every one of the models had, had some, some element of excavation and then, and then capping, which is essentially creating a barrier, a barrier from contact with any of the, any contaminated material below that. So there were, there were just varying degrees of excavation, of excavation to certain concentrations. And then there were risk profiles generated for those, for each of those options. And then we vetted through with the town and with the regulators down to essentially four that fell within the confines of, you know, what has been approved within the state, what is, what is deemed to be appropriate with the regulators and, and some nuanced things like you, like you see at Greenwich High School where they're doing some innovative work there on those fields. So the, the one that we're zeroing in on right now is essentially removal of, of, they call them hotspots of, you know, elevated concentrations of contaminants in, in certain areas that are, that are highly, or that are at higher levels. And then a two-foot removal across the field and a two-foot cap back onto the field. And, and about 75% of that cap is essentially your synthetic turf.
So, so it's not, so there'll be very, so the, of the two proposals, it would entail two feet removal across the entire field with deeper removal at various hotspots. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
And of those hotspots, how deep are we talking about needing to go? Has that been decided yet, or what is part of the proposal?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure exactly. I can't remember what the deepest spot is, but I want to say it's somewhere around eight or 10 feet down and pull that material out mainly because there's, there's, there's some material above that as well that's hot. So we would go down to, to, to about eight or 10-foot depth at a couple of locations and remove those. And what, what it does is it reduces the concentration loading, you know, within any of the material and essentially drops the average concentration of contaminants across the site. Even, even though you're, you're basically putting a clean cover on it so that nobody can access it.
Got it. Okay. And then one question you may not be able to answer, but on the timing piece of this, assuming one of those two likely scenarios gets approved by the state and they, and you, and EPA, and you get the approval from the date of approval, how long will it take you to actually finish the project?
I can comment on, on how long it will take us to finish the design. I don't know how long it will take to go through the procurement process and the bidding and all that other, all that other stuff. But the design would likely be on the order of maybe three to four months for the design. It could be faster than that if, if we're able, by the time we get to that point, because we've been having so many discussions with EPA and Connecticut DEP, they're, they're right on board with us as we're kind of, kind of developing it. Usually, it's you develop the design and you submit it, and then they comment, and it takes a little bit longer. We're, we're in a much different position here where they're right along with us. What we're walking them through our thought process. So it should be a much faster review process, I think, and approval process once the design's ready. We can pull the design together quite quickly within, I would say, you know, a month to two months, fully designed and, and submitted for approval.
Thanks.
All right, Ms. Hirsch?
I'm hoping that we can get this moving certainly very quickly because it has been a very, very long time for our students. I know I have one that, two that went there that never stepped foot on the field. One is graduating on Monday. So I guess many of the questions I had have been answered, but one of the other questions I sort of wanted to get out there is I know you're starting to work on some of the plans for access to the fields and how to get things done, you know, in a safe manner. But I want to make sure that you guys are also considering the needs of the students, not only in order to get the work started as soon as possible but to ensure that there's, there will be no unintended consequences due to excavation and work. Not only in, in order to get the work started as soon as possible, but to ensure that there's, there will be no unintended consequences due to excavation and work. So I'm hoping that you're thinking about that as in, you know, ensuring that our students, that, that the work will not interrupt our students' education. So if we have any blasting.
Yes. Uh, hopefully, hopefully no blasting. Um, we don't have any blasting plan, but, uh, so I, I think the, um, the answer to your question is absolutely, that's part of the evaluation. The principal is involved, the athletics director is involved in these discussions as we kind of work through logistics and, and, and what it would look like. So, um, certainly part of the evaluation.
So that's really good to know. Um, and just as a comment to, uh, to my fellow members of the board and I, and other town bodies. And I'm hoping that we're all going to be able to, uh, to move this along as quickly as possible. Once we get, uh, a necessary approval from the state. Um, and making, ensuring that all the necessary resources are there to have a shovel in our grounds as soon as possible on this. Hopefully by the start of next summer, the absolute latest. So whatever we can do to get that moving forward. I know Joe asked, please keep us, uh, updated because, uh, many of us, uh, would really like to see this move forward quickly.
All right. I think that's it on this item. Thank you very much for the update. We look forward to, uh, to hearing that we have reached an agreement with the state and can move this project forward. All right. The next item is the strategic plan ad hoc committee update. Mr. Share.
Thank you, Mike. Can you bring up the, the slides, Mike? Yeah, perfect. So for those of you who are following along on Zoom, uh, you can see, um, there, there's not any particularly new information, but this is a prop for the board to kind of recap, uh, where we are. If you go to the next slide, you recall we're in a strategy process. You've seen this slide many times before. Uh, here's just a reminder, like at Disneyland, you are here on the map. We are between, um, vision, midget and setting strategic goals. Um, makes no sense to set strategic goals without community input. So, uh, we're here talking about the survey, uh, that is part of the process we've all agreed to pursue. The community survey and input, if you go to the next slide, Mike. Just by way of a reminder, uh, our committees met on the survey and input 11 times. The survey we've developed is derived from the 2015 strategic plan survey, which was designed by the, uh, PCG, who's also doing the work for us with special ed. And also you'll recall that the board looked at other leading school districts best in class surveys to arrive at the design that, uh, is, uh, in the packet, um, in front of the board. It's focused only on the information necessary for long range strategic, uh, plan decision-making. There was a lot of push and pull to add everything in the kitchen sink, uh, to this, things we might want to know. And we tried to stay disciplined and focused, stay in our lane, uh, to come up with a survey that was focused on information needed. It's also deduplicated from other Greenwich Public Schools surveys. We don't repeat questions that the board already knows the answer to, uh, from other surveys that we've put out like Panorama and others, uh, that are circulated. If we already have the data, uh, no need to go back and ask parents that again. Uh, the development of the survey was advised by a very helpful parent volunteer who's a recognized, uh, expert in market research and polling. You'll also know, and this has been before the board a couple of times, we programmed it in Survey Monkey, which is the standard, uh, survey tool used by Greenwich Public Schools. So we could see if it could actually be programmed and it worked. Most recently, since we last met, if you could move on, Mike, um, we got a, a series of, uh, a review was done by the, uh, PTA council. We, uh, got consolidated comments from the PTA council. We spent an hour at least in a meeting with the PTA council going through their comments. Deeply understanding what they were saying and what they were concerned about. Just by way of review, let me go through what was there. Uh, they were in, uh, essentially six categories. One was the structure of the survey and these, by the way, are their descriptors. So this is verbatim from their document. They were concerned if the, it would be offered in Spanish language. Of course it needs to be. They were concerned about survey length. We're all concerned about survey length. Uh, they had questions about, uh, question order, uh, because they rotate, which is a standard practice in, in there. And they were concerned about that. They were also concerned about the way answers would be presented, um, within the survey. And that is standard practice to rotate those. So you move out, um, what's called question and answer bias. So we discussed that with them and, uh, I think they were clear about that and comfortable with that. They had some comments about the demographics. As you recall, the demographic survey to remove controversy is the standard educational, uh, survey questions. From the Survey Monkey question bank for surveying on educational topics in particularly in K-12 education. Uh, there was one thing missing. Uh, there is a question about language spoken at home, primary language spoken at home. And for some reason Survey Monkey does not ask if Japanese is one of the questions, uh, that's spoken at home. We have a Japanese community in Greenwich, so we had to add that. Thank you to the PTAC for pointing that out. And then there was a little bit of a debate of when do you ask the questions? Is the beginning of the survey or the end of the survey? Uh, different people have different views on that. Most surveys are, and of these type are at the beginning. Uh, so we're just going to follow the Survey Monkey approach to it. Um, but we appreciated people think about that. Uh, they commented about a mission, omissions. There were two questions that some of their, uh, members thought should be asked. One was questions about outplacement. Um, we didn't put that in the survey because there was a separate, uh, discussion amongst the board and a report on that. So that's an example of deduplicating and not asking questions twice. They also thought that there, uh, some people thought there should be a question about a resource availability. We, that's really an implementation question. When you have a plan, it should be asked at a later time when you have something for people to look at and review. It's an important question. It's just not at this part of the process. They had a lot of comments about wording. Uh, they were concerned that in some places we were called Greenwich Public Schools. And in other places we just refer to it as Greenwich Schools. On our own documents, we use both, but to accommodate the input, we standardized on Greenwich Public Schools. So it's a little bit wordy, but everywhere in the document it now says, uh, Greenwich Public Schools. There was a concern about, um, a strategic plan or a long-term plan. We use both terminology. Uh, the recommendation was to combine them two and consistently call it the long-term strategic plan. So that's everywhere in the document. There were some other, um, small recommendations on wording and you can see those in the draft survey that's out on Survey Monkey right now. A lot of the discussion was around question types. There's a question type. It's informally known or jargon known amongst survey people as polarities. It's a questioning type and a questioning technique where you, um, give someone a, two choices. And, or three choices, and you kind of force them to answer a question. You, you can't take those answers literally as they are. They have to be taken in context collectively. So you can really, uh, discern what it is people are saying. Uh, it's a standard case. It's, it's technically known as forced rank. Uh, you can look it up and Google it if you're interested. It's a standard, uh, approach. Uh, so we had a lot of conversation about that. The PTAC made some suggestions on changing the wording. So they thought parents wouldn't get confused. It used to say, uh, would you say? And then it's given them two polarities. It now says, uh, which statement is closest to your view? And, uh, so we took care of that and we took their recommendation and we changed that. Um, they're in the process of sending. Uh, they asked for us a definition of what this is and how it works. We sent something to Brian today based on feedback that we got from our, uh, parent volunteer expert. And, uh, I think they'll be sharing that with their members. There was also a concern about the definition of neighborhood schools. Uh, this had been raised by board members as well. Uh, so we took care of that. They were concerned about grammar and spelling. Yes, absolutely. Needs to be vetted for grammar and spelling. Uh, it has been done. I'm sure there's still a grammar spelling issue somewhere, uh, in the survey. It's a, a lot of pages. Uh, so we went through that. So we addressed all of that and really thank you to Brian, uh, Peldunas and the PTAC team for digging so deeply, giving us the feedback. And we were glad to, uh, address it all. The last point was after we made those changes, oddly, we have a higher score, uh, from Survey Monkey on the survey itself. It went from good to great, which I think is always a good thing, I think. Uh, but the completion rate, estimated completion rate went down a couple of points. I don't understand what their algorithm is. Uh, they also think it takes less time to answer the survey now. And they are estimating only 14 minutes. Uh, we've put in the survey, as I've said before, uh, to tell people it's going to take 20 minutes. We want people to really think and, and really, uh, take a look at it. So the survey is now completed with all the comments. Oh, one other thing. We did get one more review feedback from Ms. Downey. Thank you very much, Christina. Uh, we took those into account. Uh, we made some changes based upon what you, uh, pointed out. I hope you've seen those in the survey. We took out as an example, single high school. Um, that question was really meant to get at the house system. I think future boards really need to get at the question of preservation of the house system. Cause we have the second largest high school in Connecticut. And, uh, you know, there is a strategic question about how you want the high school to run. Just one big giant high school, or do you want to, do parents feel it need to be broken up into, uh, something that's more manageable? Not physically, not practically, but, uh, through, uh, some things the administrators might come up with. And the other question was, uh, people were concerned about questions about the, uh, leadership. In the survey, you'll now see that's broken out into a separate question. Um, and it gives context to, uh, parents about why that question's being asked. In my experience doing, uh, strategy consulting for a long, long time with business units. If you look at a strategy and you're not asking a question about, uh, the effectiveness of your leadership. You're just missing a huge hole in a kind of strategic discussion. Doesn't mean our, our leadership is good or bad as a board or whatever, but it's really important to get an understanding of what the key stakeholders think. To be considered. So that's in there too. So you guys can all see the change and we incorporated all the changes. We incorporated all the feedback. We were going to meet as a group one more time this week to go over it. We just needed to take it in and, and get it done. Uh, unfortunately our meeting got canceled for a variety of reasons. I'm glad to tell board members separately. Um, but anyway, the survey's there. It's done. It's complete. I'm hoping there isn't a meeting 12. But, you know, that's for everybody else to decide. With that, any questions?
All right. So then check with the committee members if they have anything they want to add before we go to discussion. Karen?
Sure. So I think I've spent a lot of time, um, on the survey and we've spent a lot of time taking in the comments that we've received and, uh, accommodating those comments where it made sense. And I think Peter has done an eloquent job of explaining where in certain circumstances, we, we may not have thought that those, we, while appreciating the comments that, um, why we didn't take them. And I think from my standpoint, um, this committee has worked really hard in getting to this point. It's taken us a long time. Uh, I think that just goes to show the amount of thought that has gone into all of this. And from my personal and humble opinion, I'd like to be done with the survey. I'd like to move on to the next step. I'd like the board to, if they have, I, I'd take a look at it and, and bless it. And we can decide when to get it out. I think we've spent more time on the survey than actually needed to be. And I'd like to get to the actual getting some, getting additional data and getting to the point of, uh, actually drafting and formulating a new strategic plan that we can put in front of the board and the community. Because I think that's where the real debate and dialogue will happen and should happen. Uh, I think we've kind of got lost through the trees here on what we needed to get done. And, and it's just been stuck in purgatory, for lack of a better word. So I'd like to, you know, I'd like to get my, I would like to get the blessing of the board to move forward with the survey. We can decide at a different time on when is the best to get it out. Uh, I have some reservations about putting it out over the time of summer, but I'd like to get it out and I'd like to move on to the next steps. And I'd like the board's blessing to do so.
Ms. Hirsch, I think I had, you know, half due.
Well, I, I was participatory as, uh, as part of the committee in the discussion with PTA council, but I, I hadn't, when I saw the survey post, I hadn't seen the changes made. So I don't have, um, much comment. So I, cause I, what was posted was the original one. So I don't know, um, when the revisions were made, but, um, they were discussed thoroughly. Um, we've spent a lot of time trying to go over this. You know, so I, I don't know what exactly, I, I knew what you were suggesting, but I think you also mentioned that Jennifer Negren was going to share, um, an understanding of the polarity questions. Correct?
Yeah. And I already sent that to Brian and it's copied to you and to Karen. It's in your mailbox. So.
Okay. I didn't.
Yeah.
See that. I don't know when it.
Yeah. So that, that's already out there and then they'll have to toss if they need more. You know, we've, well, anyway, um, and the changes are all online. So you should look at it again when you have a chance.
All right. Um, Michael, if you could post that PowerPoint to the, uh, to board docs. Peter, I'm probably one of the 72% that started and didn't finish it. I, I think the work that you guys have done has moved it along, right? We had some questions about formulations and, and other stuff. I think you've, you've resolved some of them. Although I did go in and look and I can't tell, cause there's some green comment, um, things. I don't know if that's something that's changed, something that you were working on.
No, the cut, there's 22 comments. There were people who went, there were two people who went online. Uh, one was the COSCOB PTA president and put in, looked at all the screens and commented, anybody could comment. Uh, the other person was Karen Hirsch. There are only two people commenting and collectively they had, uh, 20, uh, I'm sorry, not 22, 23 comments. We, we reviewed every single one of those comments. And, uh, you know, as, as Ms. Kowalski said, every single one of those that committee thought made sense. Uh, you know, we changed some of them were like, hey, there's a spelling error here or, you know, so on and so forth. And then some of them are substantive. You can, you can actually see them online. So if you, you know, cause I've given review capability to everybody. So if you want to see what those are, but we went over all of those and resolved all those two.
All right. Cause I, I tried clicking into one. It didn't let me in. I don't have a Survey Monkey account and I don't know if that's on a, it's not on the school's platform. So I don't know who's Survey Monkey platform. It's on.
It's on the town of Greenwich platform because the, at the time that we asked for support from the school system, the school system said, we are not, uh, the administrator said, we don't have resources to support you in this right now. The town, the town of Greenwich did. So it, it's all still in-house.
Okay. Presumably we'll be able to move that over to our platform.
Well, you have to move it.
Yeah.
But you have to.
It has to come from the Greenwich Public Schools. Okay. So I guess what's there now is the final, final survey. Is that right? Cause I, I started it. I saw the green bubbles. Wasn't sure if that was indicative of what was still needed to be fixed.
No, those won't go away just because there are people commenting, but they don't go away. There's no, I mean, I could go in and delete them all. Uh, we could go in and delete them all just.
It might eliminate some confusion for anybody that's clicking the link.
Yeah, that's.
All right. And I know the panorama.
Let me just ask a question. Do we want to delete them all? Karen and Karen? Cause I'll, I'll go, I'll go get it done so that for the other board members, it's not confusing.
Well, I assume.
We're done, we're done with those, right?
Remove ones that you resolved.
We resolved them all. So do, do.
Yeah, I'm fine. I think we should just remove them. I think.
I'll, I'll do whatever people want to do.
Yeah.
I don't have an opinion.
The purpose of originally leaving them was to see, so that others could see the comments that were there. And so that you had the benefit of understanding what other comments had been made and seeing what we did. If it's confusing and we've already resolved them, then delete them and send it on.
Can I just say like, cause it, I think it only got posted today and I haven't had a chance to look at it. So whatever way you think facilitates the eight of us looking at it one last time. I know, not to beat the dead horse, but I would like to just at least look at the changes. So whether it's keep them in or take them out, whatever, whatever you think makes it cleaner.
I have no preference.
Review it. You can take it up whenever you want. If you want to take it up as an item in the meeting next Wednesday, you can do that. It's up to you guys.
I, I don't know. I mean, the panorama's in the field. I, I don't know what our response rate is. I know you're probably going to have it in the parent note again tomorrow. I, I'm not so sure about doing a survey in the summer, um, just because we lose parent interest. So, uh, I mean, we can have that discussion. Ms. Downey.
Right. Yeah. To, to follow up on Peter's point, if we just say, okay, the survey's cooked, it's ready to go and we're just not putting it out till September. Maybe this strategy, if you pardon the pun, to do it. But are there things, um, in terms of advancing the process that we? But are there things um in terms of advancing the process that we, that the committee has in mind to do while we're waiting to get the survey? Or is this a stumbling block to any further tasks? If you could kind of, I I kinda missed your, I didn't write down all the steps that you had, kind of where the you are here, what other steps can be done in the meantime? You have any?
The the next, the next step is, the board has to, I mean, the, you get to the meat of the strategy process, right? And I I'm not gonna be here, I mean, I'm I'm gone in November, so this process is gonna go further than November. So this is really a question for those of you who are gonna be here. The way that strategy is developed is it's informed, it's informed by uh critical information to help you a- ask and answer strategic questions, right? Not operational questions, this is where discipline is required. And um the purpose of this is to really take the temperature of the key stake, the key stakeholders, right? You also need information about what the uh administrators, other stakeholders need, but this is the most important set of stakeholders, cause we're here for kids, right? So that's what the whole thing is focused on. So if you're gonna sit down as a board team, uh and I'm glad to help you in the time that remains, uh you know, in September and October. And um focus on, uh strategy is not about what to do. It's actually about what not to do. Cause if you look at Greenwich Public Schools, I mean, you're gonna look at, we have four forty-three to fifty major programs. So doesn't mean you're gonna keep those or get rid of them or add them, but it's really about focus and what's the most important focus. So your next step would be to talk about as a group informed, wh- where do you wanna go? What what are the goals? Where do you wanna be? Where do you wanna be in the timeframe you're setting? I believe you're setting a five, five uh five-year timeframe. Maybe you guys wanna change that, but the last one was done on five years, five years is good. Uh particularly in an organization that is like a public organization and doesn't move as uh as agi- with as much agility as others. So that's the next step. Um I don't think you can get very far in that conversation without actually having this information. If I, if uh were my suggestion, I think there's so many stakeholders are interested in it, I don't think it matters when you put it in the field. Because our response rates in Greenwich are so high. Um historically, every time we've surveyed, uh they're so high, you're not gonna have the problem of a five percent response rate that won't be a a sample. But if that makes everybody comfortable, Christina, what I would do is put it in the field right when people come back. And then schedule the meeting where you're gonna review the data and you're only gonna put it in the field for ten, for two weeks. Not three, not four, not forever, you're gonna put it in the field and you put it on the September agenda where you're reviewing the results at a date certain. What's happened here is this thing's kinda just bubbled along for months and months and months and months and months. And you know, we're not making any progress. So that's what I would do. And then you can have a conversation about strategic goals. You'll get the advantage in that conversation of people like Peter, me, Megan particularly, who uh Kathleen, who have a little bit longer edge perspective. But we're not gonna be a part of the process, maybe Kathleen will be if she runs again, I don't know what her plans are. But this will be for new, a new set of people to do. Um my suggestion, just pure suggestion was, take advantage of that skill while it's here, but it's gonna disappear uh the first week of December. And then you can move on to revalidate that with the new board members. And then maybe you have a shot of moving on and talking about what would the real strategies be? Which has to be a deep dialogue with the administration. That has to be done collaboratively, particularly. Goal setting can be done by the board. But when you get to strategies, that's where the real collaboration starts with the management, which is where the rubber meets the road. And you might have a shot of doing that January, February and having a plan by March. That would be my view of the calendar, but it's an off the cuff. Typically, I'm used to going faster, cause it's more focused. But we don't typically run that way and then you've got this nasty thing of the budget and an election in the middle of it. Does that help?
Ms. Hersh.
I I do think I, Mr. Share makes a very good point and we've talked about it repeatedly in our committee, um that the need for stakeholder input should also include um our educators and administrators so that whatever strategic plans and goals we put in place are things that they can actually accomplish. Um and so the on, the only other thing I could say that we might be able to do in in the interim is if the board approves this particular survey or parts of the survey, whatever it is that you guys are going to approve as a whole, um that we could take that and then revise what's in there uh to speak to our educators. Yeah, so I'm saying that that could be done in the interim before this one goes out, we could just take the time to the revise it uh for educators.
Okay, so i- if I'm uh if I'm following Peter, we would take up at some point in the uh in the not-too-distant future, authorizing the release of the survey in September. Maybe scheduling when we're doing the agenda plan for next year, which is a couple items from now. Putting a strategic plan update basically to discuss the uh the results at that meeting and then you go from there. All right, so just keep.
Here, what I would do is, I I think we've had these before. I, my suggestion would be when we get to agenda plan, if you, if you guys are so inclined, but you know, uh it depends on what you guys wanna do, particularly those that are staying. I would set the September. I would also set a goal session to at least start that conversation in October. I would pick a date certain to set that. And but you're not gonna complete, you won't, I would not recommend you try to complete that in October. But I think you should get started in October based upon the discussion of what comes out of September. That would be my suggestion to you, and I agree with what uh Ms. Hirsch was saying, which is if you really think you need input after, particularly after you look at panorama, I don't know when Dr. Jones is releasing panorama to the board, it should should be right away now. No, I s- as soon as it gets out of the field, right? The the raw results should look at that because what you really need to figure out to Ms. Hirsch's point is you need to figure out out of that, what else is strategic in nature? Cause there's other stuff in panorama that's more operational, strategic in nature, that's gonna have an information gap. Teachers and administrators is an information gap we've talked about um in the committee and I agree with you, maybe over the summer, early September, you finish off that survey, so you can put that in the field too.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to our action items. So the first action item is uh summer transfer, so I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to authorize the BOE Executive Committee to approve all budget appropriation transfers uh during the summer. Is there a second for that? Stowe, any discussion? This is a annual agenda item, just to move it along. All right, hearing no discussion, we're gonna go ahead and take a uh vote. Bernstein is yes, Stowe.
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Sher. Thank you, that passes eight zero. All right, the next item is the financial and staffing report, again to move things along. Uh I'm gonna make a motion to accept the monthly financial and staffing report, is there a second? Ms. Stowe, great. All right, Mr. O'Keefe, give us the highlights.
Okay, um so through May, we're at a hundred and, just a little under a hundred and forty-four million dollars, which represents eighty-eight percent of the budget uh of a hundred and sixty-three point four. Uh compared to the same period last year, our year-to-date spending's up a little less than one percent, which is attributable to salaries, uh COVID expenses that have not yet transferred, they will, they're actually being transferred this week to the, to the grant funds for a total of four point seven million, which was previously approved by the BET and the board event. Also, uh we have higher outplace tuition, as you all know, that we've been tracking all year long. And then we have some COVID-related savings and quite a bit of it, summer E S Y savings, significant amount of transportation savings uh attributable to summer athletics, late bus, full remote days, hybrid schedule days. And just as an example of, uh you know, we had two fully remote weeks following vacation breaks where we were remote and uh that that drove about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of savings for each one, so considerable savings. Fuel savings, professional learning and related travel, uh professional other services all contributed to the uh COVID-related savings. The projection um right now, uh you know, well, previously I communicated that we will not be needing an interim for the for the special ed tuition. Uh in addition to that, that's still true, in addition to that, my uh my projection at this point in time is that we will probably have somewhere in the vicinity of about a million dollars in the black. Now, still a lot of balls in the air, so uh you know, we'll be updating that number uh with closer to the pin views and we'll keep the board updated uh as we close in on the number in the next two to three weeks. Uh capital, overall capital balance stands at eighteen point seven million, which is a a decrease from the April report of about two million dollars. Uh as of today, we're at eighteen point three, so another drop of uh four hundred thousand in the last ten days uh since the start of the year. Due to the in- increased focus on capital, our our capital available balance has decreased by nineteen point two million dollars uh or about fifty-one, fifty-two percent. Over to school lunch, uh year-to-date May revenue for school lunch, uh one million six hundred ninety-six thousand, which again is lagging well below the same period last year when we, we recorded two point seven million. So a year-to-year decrease of about little over a million dollars. Care sales are down by one point eight seven million, but our reimbursements are are significantly up by about eight hundred thousand. Uh year-to-date May expenses overall, uh three million three hundred and seventy-four thousand compared to three million four a year ago, so a year-to-year decrease of about seventy K. And that's attributable to lower salaries, uh food costs and partly offset by uh the food delivery, transportation costs and and slightly increase in benefits. As of today, we're projecting that revenue will come in about three point one million or about a million uh less than budget with uh cash sales uh expected to underrun by about two point nine and reimbursements expected to be uh one point eight million dollars over budget. Uh for expenses, we expect to be at approximately three point six five million or about six hundred and ten thousand uh under budget. Uh from a net point of view, we're projecting, uh our initial projection is a deficit of about five hundred thousand. Uh but when we transfer, uh in July, we'll be doing this, we'll be transferring the food delivery uh cost over to S R two. Uh the net, the net deficit will come down to about two hundred and forty-seven thousand. And then with the general fund transfer of about two twenty.
If you could keep it down in the back, it's a little hard to hear, thank you.
And then with the, and then with the 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 budgeted uh transfer from the general fund of two twenty, it should, it should bring us close to break even about slightly negative number of about twenty-seven. But I do believe that the state reimbursements could be a little bit higher based on the latest trend. So we have a good shot of breaking even or even uh a slight profit. Uh in the package also is the, is the typical, uh the usual uh out-of-district placement and settlements. Uh as of June seventh, our out-of-district placement tuition, three point six four one million dollars. Settlements represent the uh tuition settlements, three point six nine two million. Uh we still have some pending items of about four hundred and sixty thousand. So right now, we're projecting about uh seven points, uh seven point six, seven five million dollars. Uh which is um two, about two point three million dollars over budget and about three hundred and seventy-five K over what we projected at the beginning of the year. But again, we'll be containing that expense uh uh with our COVID-related savings. The last item is uh COVID-related, so and I won't go over this, cause I've reviewed a lot of it already. We have four grants uh received to date, S R one for seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand, which needs to be spent by September of twenty-two. Coronavirus Relief Fund or known as C R F, a million two hundred and four thousand uh to be spent by December twenty twenty-two. Both of those items have been fully spent and are being transferred this week to the uh, to the grant fund over at the town. The third one is the S R two for four point two six eight million dollars. Of that four point two six eight, we are transferring over about two point seven million, leaving about one point five million to be spent in the uh twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And then finally is the uh the A R P also called S R three. And that is nine point, almost nine point six million dollars to be spent by September of twenty twenty-four. Uh that, that fund is just getting started and, you know, as Tony mentioned at the beginning of the uh session, it requires community input. And that uh initial community input already took place about a week or so ago. And uh so mo- more to know on that. Uh on that one, as we get uh further inputs. Uh that's all I had for the uh for the, any questions?
Yep, uh thank you, Sean, Peter here.
Sean, can I ask you a question about, I I don't know if I've already approved this or if it came before the board. I am looking in the budget book and I am looking under the program library and media services. And I'm looking at, it has a variety of major cost centers to it. I'm looking particularly at Eastern Middle School. And I'm looking at the two lines, fif- uh fifty-one, ten and fifty-one, twenty. And as I read these, it looks like they're funding uh essentially three heads. Um that looks about a salary that's probably related to three heads. And I understand I got a note today, I don't know if anybody else on the board got it, from someone pointing out that that's not how we're staffed right now. So I'm I'm trying to understand what we're actually staffed at, at Eastern, I have the same question for other schools, but this one I know and I understand. And how many headcount are there? A- and if we transferred this budget to something else, uh when as a board did we do that and I wasn't paying attention?
Peter, I I I'm gonna have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, I mean, I, you, did you know if there was an actual departmental budget transfer that we've ever done for this?
I am not aware of that.
Yeah, I didn't, I I didn't recall it either, but I I could miss it. So could you do me a favor? Could you look into that and?
I will absolutely.
Send me an email. Yeah, um I I'm interested in understanding in library media services versus the approved budget. If what headcount is in these budget lines right now? And um if anything was, I I'm just interested to understand, so could you could go look at that? Um and I'm, I'm looking at fifty-one, I imagine there's fifty-one, ten and fifty-one, twenty.
Yep.
At uh Eastern, I'm interested in it at Central and I'm interested in it at Western. Just to complicate the question.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean.
The Central and Western, the same thing?
Yeah, same thing, I'm I'm interested in, in how many headcount are applied against budget lines fifty, fifty-one, ten and fifty-one, twenty.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thanks, thanks a ton, appreciate it.
No problem.
Hey Sean, this is Peter Bernstein, okay, I wanna understand this, so uh you said we're likely to end the year somewhere around a million dollars in the black, which is great. But just, just to confirm, the only reason we're in the black is the COVID expenses uh that have been applied from the grants, which is four point six million plus additional COVID savings. So without that, without the savings, without the uh the grants, we'd be seeking an additional appropriation, is that accurate?
You you can absolutely interpret that, uh the four point seven million dollars that we're applying to uh the the COVID-related grants would, would, without those, would have been an interim of four point seven million. And and then, and then you know, we'd be asking for an interim for the special ed tuition of two point uh two point three million dollars. But because.
So we've been able to basically absorb the additional expenses due to COVID as well as the special education uh tuition, thanks to the grants and the savings in transportation and other lines.
That's, that's in a COVID-related savings and transportation is a big part of that. Um so COVID-related savings and the fact that at the beginning of the year, we had no idea we were gonna be getting these grants, so we were kinda hoping that uh we we hoping we'd be able to figure this out somehow. But uh the grants came through and uh enabled us to contain all of our COVID-related spending.
That's good news, Ms. Hirsch.
Well, in conjunction with what Mr. Sharad said, um Dr. J-
Well, in conjunction with what Mr. Sheridan said, Dr. Jones, this is for you, actually. At our last meeting, when this was presented to us, I had asked about the several media assistant positions that were on hold, including the two media assistants at Greenwich High School and one for Central Middle. I see they're still listed as awaiting the superintendent's approval. And I know I'd asked just for an update, are we going to be filling those prior to or for next year, especially now that our schools are going to be fully open? Well, let's hope they're all going to be fully opened. Our students will have the opportunity to be able to utilize those media centers and we'll really need that that added support in there as much as possible.
I'm working with the administration on that question. Our three middle school principals are looking at a lot of scheduling aspects right now. And then we've been very transparent and had those on here as frozen this almost entire year, and it's been on every financial report. So and we've had it on there for that reason. One of the buildings that you mentioned, which is Eastern, has some scheduling challenges that and I think PCG may actually bring some of that forward as well. I have no idea if it'll show up in their report. So we're being very, very careful about the FTE that we have to work with and where the need is the greatest within that building. And we are listening to administration who are really trying to make sure they have FTE in the right spaces where they really need it, not only to be in compliance in some areas, but just where their student need right now. So that's why it's been frozen. And and when any position leaves in the district, the first thing we do is freeze it and analyze it just to make sure we don't continue doing what we've always done, just because we've always done it. And it is hard with our budget because we do the budget a full year in advance. And, you know, we start having all of those discussions, so it is hard doing it a year in advance.
Ms. Kowalski.
I was I had. Sorry, it was a multi point question. Well, you know, as that is, I know this was an unusual year and how our students were in our school facilities and how they were utilizing that. So that's why I wasn't asking during the year while they were on hold. But next year, hopefully, we will be returning to normal and I'd really like to be able to see those positions returned. It's the same question I would have that I asked the last time in regard to the food manager positions for K A. at Havemeyer and at GHS. I know there was a change in food service this year, but I'm hoping that we're going to be looking to fill those for next year and had asked for an update at our last meeting. So if you could make sure that to keep us updated on that as soon as possible, to make sure that they're going to be filled or how we're going to handle the vacancies before next year. Thank you.
Ms. Kowalski.
I don't understand what you mean by scheduling challenges. How do the scheduling challenges affect the the approval for media assistants?
Because when a position comes open, if the building, if the building principal comes to me and says we have an open position, I really would like to use that FTE in a different way. We start that conversation because all three buildings and middle school especially do not actually program their media assistants even in the same way. They all three buildings use those positions differently. Some of them are on the rotation, one position may not be so that it's a conversation with the principals because they only have the FTE that they have to work with. So if they come and they say, I really have a scheduling challenge and I have this open FTE, I'm not, you know, taking away anybody's position, we might freeze the position so it doesn't go away, but they really need an FTE for intervention or for something of that nature, we go in and look at that because we have to live within what we have in the budget and the operating budget.
So what are the challenges? You said all three middle schools. So what what do the three middle school principals want to do with their FTE?
They if if they decide they have an FTE, it could be they want, they need an intervention position. It could be that they need more music in order to get their their students scheduled so that they can go to, you know, their intervention class and not have to make a choice between taking one class or another. All three of the buildings are different in how they schedule.
No, I understand, but you said scheduling, so they you said we have scheduling challenges, so that's why they're on hold. So I'm trying to drill down and to understand what are those scheduling challenges that keeps these positions on hold? So what what are they asking for that we don't that can't put the media in place? So clearly they've asked for something and I want to know what have they asked for?
Well, so I'm going to use Eastern as an example. Their schedule looks more like the high school than it does some of the other middle schools. And our students who need an intervention class, and I may not have this exactly, I need my notes in front of me, but we may have a student who really needs reading intervention. And there's actually, and I and I know I have parents in the audience that could correct me, where they actually don't get to take social studies because they have a need, I believe it's in reading. They're nodding their heads, yes. That's a problem. And so we're looking within the schedule at what can we actually go in and be able to get the schedule to look a little bit different to meet the needs of the students? And it is a series of, you know, difficult decisions and discussions. When you get to this point in the year, the again, the budget was set, you know, it's already set. And that's that's part of the discussion right now. There's some challenges like that at Eastern specifically right now, where the principal has requested, can we freeze that FTE so I can have time to go in and really because he's he's committed to the schedule and wants it to look a little bit different next year if if he can get there. When you look at the high school, let's say we have a media assistant that opens up and we think that we can get by, especially at the beginning of the year when we were looking already at huge deficits, not only from special ed, not knowing what's going on with COVID, we didn't know if we were going to get any federal grants. We didn't know if we were going to get those federal grants to drop in this year or where they're going to drop, you know, after July one into next year's budget. So some of those positions we will freeze because we know we may need that money to be able to take care of some of the deficits we could have. We've ended at a much better place, as you've heard tonight, so we'll we will certainly be looking at the GHS ones. We just haven't done that yet.
Yeah, well, I just along with Karen, I think you're keeping us posted as soon as we decide and having a better clarity on what they're on what the middle schools are needing those full time positions for as the alternative, because I it's still very unclear to me what they're asking for from a scheduling standpoint, what do they want to fill versus use putting back into place the media assistance? I I'd like to have specifics. What do they want to use that full time person for?
Ms. Ellen.
Yeah, just real fast on capital, I know we've done a really good job of working it down, but since we've had a theme on Western tonight, I just want to make sure I'm seeing these numbers correctly. We have, Sean, one point two million or so still to work with before we'd have to go out for an interim of any sort if we were lucky enough to get Western agreed upon by the state. Is that right?
Yes, that sounds about right.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Share.
Dr. Jones, I'm gonna, I think there's a process and information gap here and I'm just gonna assume it is. I understand everything you've said about the budget. I've been doing budgets in Greenwich a lot longer than anybody sitting at this table. The process is we set budgets and our policy is we have major cost centers and we budget by program and dollars represents heads. They can be moved from one to the other, but that's not a management discretion to the superintendent or the superintendent staff. Per our policy, any move of more than ten thousand dollars has to come here. So we allocated this money and we approve this budget. If the administration wants to take a headcount out of one program and move it to another program, that has to come before the board for approval. So the idea that we allocated this money for this program, these positions were not filled. So the money that we appropriated was not expended and we made that decision at that time by vote of the board based upon full transparency of what the program was supposed to be. That money was supposed to be spent on that. Part of the reason we do that is when we look at a budget, we have to look for equity. We have to look for a variety of different things. So as an example, if at Western, I have three hundred kids or four hundred kids and I've got one media services person and then at Eastern, I've got eight hundred kids. Now, the two principals aren't going to see that issue, but that is an equity issue. We've now have a situation where we're not staffing appropriately. So when we frozen like that, we do that. The point that's made is absolutely the these things can be changed, but it has to come to the board for approval. It's not a something so I don't, I'm very interested to understand how many headcount are in that? I'm I want I want to work off of facts. So that's my first question to Sean. And for what wasn't expended, I want to know if any of that money was expended on something else without coming here for a proper transfer. So there's a process to do this. But I I think there's a confusion that this is somehow full discretion of the administration and under our policies and our procedures, it's it's not. It has to come back through the board to be approved. I recognize that Ms. Hirsch called this out a couple of meetings ago. I don't want to overreact to it. I want to hear the facts first, but then we need to correct the situation because if the board approves something that is based upon the proposal from the administration, I think there's a clear expectation that that's going to get executed once it's proposed, unless somebody comes in and deliberately asks to do something different. And I didn't hear that in the dialogue and I just want to be sure that going forward, there should be no confusion about that.
Okay, I think it's it for discussion and I guess Sean and Tony, I guess you've got some takeaways. All right, so the motion on the table is to accept the monthly financial and staffing report. So Bernstein is a yes, Stowe.
Yes.
Hirsch.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kowalski.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Olson.
Yes.
And Share.
Yeah, because it doesn't matter, but I'm not in love with what's in there on the headcount.
Okay, so seven zero one, thank you very much. The next item is the budget procedures. Somebody wants to make a motion. Okay, so your motion is to accept the budget procedures as presented?
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry. Motion to approve the fiscal year twenty three budget procedures.
All right, is there a second for that? Ms. Downey, thank you. Mr. Akif, you want to just give us the quick highlight?
Yes, so this was the second read of the full year twenty three budget policy and procedures. It was first looked at by the board several weeks ago. At that time, two changes were requested on page two, added number eighteen utilization of S or ARP funding in the operating budget section. And then on page three, in item five, starting with priorities, we added ADA compliance as well.
All right, any discussion on the on the budget procedures? And I guess, Mr., as you said earlier, the budget committee will meet throughout the summer with the administration as they start work on next year's budget.
Absolutely. Last summer I got to do policy all summer and this year we could do budget all summer. So this is a good time.
Fantastic, all right. With no other discussion, we'll take a vote. Bernstein is a yes, Stowe.
Yes.
Hirsch.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
And Share.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That passes eight zero and the last of our action items is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two agenda plan. I'm going to take a stab at this because we have some some changes. So I moved to adopt the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two BOE agenda plan as presented with the following changes. The date for the to to be determined meeting would be September twenty third. We would add on.
I think it was August, Peter.
Oh, I'm sorry, August twenty thirty, yes, sorry about that. August twenty third for the Sep- September. Actually, I don't know that we have a date for this yet. I'm going to hold on that one. And for the strategic, we'll add strategic plan to September twenty third and that would be specifically to review survey results. And that's that's the motion for now. Is there a second for the motion?
I got confused on the August twenty third. What is?
August twenty third is the the basically setting superintendent goals, return to school and possibly Julian Curtis Edspecs. We had August nineteen, some board members said that date didn't work. I sent an email to the board, everybody came back that the twenty third worked, except I didn't hear from you.
But it wasn't clear what it was for.
Yeah, it's the first item on the agenda plan that's on the on board docs.
Okay, and then the other question is.
Well, we need a second for the motion first, Peter, before we get to discussion.
Do we want to get?
We'll try to do as much as we can in the first motion and then we can add to it. All right, so go ahead. We get a second from Stowe, go ahead. This is this is the current, this is the agenda plan for next year that we're looking at, right? So we're 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 going to set the date.
My question was, it appears under S or three, we need to have an LEA approval is required. We are the LEA. Unfortunately, that's not delegatable to the superintendent. So the question becomes, when do we have to do that so that that application is made on time?
So I was actually going to take that up when we got to agenda planning for this year because that's still an extension of this year. So yeah, no, but good, good, good point. And I think you have to work backwards from when you need to get it to the state.
Query like, is anything in the summer part of this agenda planned, including the S or money or a special ed?
No, that would still be, we'll just take that as this this current year.
Even notwithstanding that it's after July one.
Yeah, it's after July one because for for purposes of this agenda plan, it's just for planning for next year, we still have these as they're open items currently, right? So we'll just take them as open items. Ms. Hirsch.
I noted this last time, but I still don't see PTA Council's end of the year summary on next year's. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the current agenda, the agenda plan for twenty one, twenty two. Usually they tend to go at the last meeting and I'd like to be able to add PTA Council's and Greenwich Alliance. I didn't see them on here. They were the start for next year. Their end of the year summaries to our last meeting.
All right, so I'm going to second that amendment. Any discussion on that amendment? So let's just take a quick roll call. Bernstein is a yes, Stowe.
Yes.
Hirsch.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
And Share.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll add that to the list of August twenty third, adding the item to strategic plan to the September business meeting and then adding those things. One other item that I know we need to add, but I'm not sure of the timing and we have to sort that out. We are negotiating, as Joe mentioned at a previous meeting, the Gosa contract this summer. We will need to approve that probably in September. I'm just not sure if if it's the the board retreat based on the timing. We'll have to find out from Tom Mooney. So Michael, if you could note that as a TBD for the agenda plan, it will probably be September, just based on previous approvals. Once we agree to it, there's a statutory schedule we have to follow. So just please note that that's probably September, Michael. All right, Ms. Hirsch.
And I assume the moment that we get any information back regarding Western Middle School fields, we will immediately add it to whatever the next agenda is. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if we need to have a special meeting for that, if there's something we need to take up, certainly, I think we'd we'd all do that and we obviously can can pull a meeting together pretty quickly.
If we get it just so we're ahead of RTM and BET discussions and approval, that would be great.
Absolutely. All right, anything else we need to add? Ms. Kowalski.
I don't see on here, and I saw on a, I could have sworn I saw on a prior draft, but the old, the approval of the old Greenwich Edspecs.
So I think some of that's just dependent on the timing of when we take up JC and also the capital budget process. I think that would probably be when we do that. I think that's a that's another one, Michael, that should go on the to be determined or to be scheduled.
Whoa.
Why?
Yeah, why don't we just take it up at the same time and get it done?
They're two very different questions at this point. JC is a send back from the BET. It was a previous budget request. OG, we have not approved the specs yet.
Yeah, but we've already had meetings where we take them both up. I mean, I don't know why we just don't take them up. Let's get it done for goodness sakes, then somebody can go figure out the timing.
Yeah, I thought it was previously on for September.
Was it?
I don't think it was September, but I don't have the date in front of me. I think it was later.
Just go back and look at the old agenda plan. But what the real question is, why don't we just get those done and then somebody else can figure out the timing of which project comes first?
Well, I think that's something we we as a board on a determine, not somebody, not somebody else, Peter, that's a board decision.
That's what I'm saying, I mean.
That would happen in the capital process. No, I understand that.
That's right. Peter, may I just address that one?
Sure.
I need to understand why we're not putting it on the the agenda. I think we kind of want to get those things voted on. What are we waiting for till we get those things voted on?
I'm just trying to figure out right now if it was in October, we'll throw it back there and give me one second to pull it up from the previous agenda.
I just think the sooner we get it done and.
I think it was in October because I think we we thought there were going to be other things in September. You know, like strategy and, you know, enrollment and we thought there was going to be things that were going to need to be addressed in the early part of the year. I'm just kind of looking through. I think it was October, but we can check.
But why don't, I mean, these are not controversial items. We've already visited them. Why don't we just put them on and vote on them and move on? I mean, they know what they need to do on OG and I don't know where they stand with that committee. We know what has to happen at.